Glenn.
All right, we should be good.
All right, I'd like to call to order this special Board of Finance meeting for Wednesday, May 6th. I'd like to start by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to, uh, public comment. Anybody gonna raise their hand for public comment? Mr. Saloga, you're up.
All right, Rich, you are unmuted.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, as previously stated, this is a time of incredible struggle for many of our citizens. It calls for each of us to sacrifice and to work collaboratively for the common good. It's been disappointing and somewhat disheartening to see some town leaders continue to put their parochial and personal interests ahead of the hardships experienced by many of our neighbors. People are unemployed, local businesses have been closed, some may not even be able to reopen when allowed to do so. We need to act responsibly in trying to reach a budget that meets basic needs with little to no tax increase on hurting taxpayers. Sacrifice should begin at the top. The Board of Selectmen's salary line was increased thirteen and a half percent in the current year. It's unacceptable to now grant another twelve percent increase for next year. On top of that, irrespective of any parody argument. That goes for all other town employees who have been compensated more than most staff in the last year or two. They should be able to forego any increase in the new budget. Board of Ed administrators should consider possible pay cuts and at the very least give up all car allowances, particularly since the schools will have been closed for about three to four months. Negotiations for possible contract modifications should be explored. With the closings, um, in the last couple of months, expenditures in this last quarter should be closely vetted and all stipends for spring and summer non-work should not be distributed. Surplus funds for the current year due to closing, staff working at home, et cetera, belong to the taxpayer, not to the individual departments. They should be used as a revenue source to help decrease any mill rate increase and assist in offsetting probable shortfalls in tax collections. In addition, the general fund is a resource for an emergency and today's times certainly qualify as such. Your financial advisors have appeared to indicate that this is an appropriate reason to use it. It can be replenished in the future. It's understandable that everyone wants to keep what they have proposed, but increases in budget items are not all absolute necessities and it's foolish and wrong to argue that they are. Proposed expenditures need to be cut, especially in light of projected revenue shortfalls. Some people propose to eliminate some of these budget items simply by using current surplus funds to purchase them now. In my opinion, that's merely manipulating the system. Reduction should be genuine and sustainable. Otherwise, the budget increase for two thousand twenty-two becomes that much higher and that's not a desirable outcome for anybody. One way to look at reductions would be to review the goals of each department to see what goes beyond the basic necessities. One that immediately comes to my mind is hiring new employees at much lower beginning salaries and also eliminating a new ASO instructor which alone could reap a ninety thousand dollar savings. I know that this board will also look at what capital projects could be possibly scaled back or postponed. Finally, I would like to briefly comment on your agenda item of a separate BOE fund. While one could possibly say this could replace any future proposed BOE budget increase, I would suggest that the Board of Finance ensure due diligence is performed to address the following implications. A, management of the funds. B, transparency of the revenue and expenditures. C, adherence to existing procurement policies. And also finally, as a precedent for all other departments to want to do the same thing. I'll just leave you with this. The new library committee had this kind of thing, uh, two years ago with their foundation and they refused to provide any documentation on their revenue and expenditures when requested to do so. So I think that needs to really be examined. Thanks very much. Um, I'd just like to end with, um, condolences to the families that have lost people in our town. It's a sad situation and I'm hopeful that, um, that situation will see some resolution shortly. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Any other public comment?
Glenn, this is Harry Shaker, uh, eighty-seven Long Meadow Hill Road. I would like to be brief with a comment.
Yes, sir.
Um, I wanted to address the, um, uh, one, one issue I have with our, uh, current Board of Education or actually educational system. Uh, and it's constructive criticism, but when you bring programs into a curriculum or into a, a, uh, you know, into a school or a district, once you have enough history on it, you need to evaluate it and you need to decide whether it is functional, whether, whether it's meeting the goals that you had. And also is it worth the amount of money that you're putting into it with what you're getting out of it? And I, I'm talking about the K through six, uh, world language program. It was originally meant to be a class, a learning situation for the students. Uh, it is a special. It is not a class. It's a special. Uh, the, the, the children in Huckleberry, I believe, are getting forty-five minutes a week. And I believe this is in three different sessions and anyone who has been in the classroom knows a forty-five minute or forty-five minutes of learning is not really forty-five minutes of learning because you've got to get the class started, uh, there's interruptions and whatever. Up at Huckleberry, I believe it's, uh, twenty minutes. I think it's sixty minutes for the week. My point being is the, the total cost for supplies for this program is forty-three, uh, forty-three hundred dollars. The annual cost for the program is over four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The balance is made up of four salaries and of benefits. The bottom line is that this program is not an educational benefit to the students. It is, uh, it, it is really, uh, an introductory program. It is not something to where they are going to go into seventh grade with an advantage over other students. Um, and, and that's, that's just the fact. And the thing that is troubling to me is that this is not being looked at this way. K through twelve, to go out and be able to say that we have a K through twelve program, is, you know, that's kind of the ideal. That's kind of the goal of schools is, is to have a K twelve. But our K through six is not functioning the way it was supposed to. And the, I'm, I'm not really coming down on the program. I'm coming down on the fact that this type of program needs to be evaluated. And I think if it's truly evaly evaluated with open eyes and open minds, you will see that this educationally is not worth four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year. And so again, I, I just wish that the, uh, education system would look at this and, and bring back facts and bring back a reason why we should con- continue with this program when, when it is not the type of benefit educationally to the students in it than to, to children who have gone through or into seventh grade without it. And, uh, that's it. I just, I just wish that they would look at this program with a more critical eye. Thank you.
Thanks, Harry. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Yeah, can I, can I speak?
Oh, absolutely. State your name and address, Laura.
Thanks. Hi, Laura Orban, ninety-five Stony Hill Road. Um, I, I just, I appreciate all the, the work that everyone's doing. And, um, I, I just want to say that I think it's important in this process for everyone to keep in mind what the roles of each board, um, and board members are. And it's the role of the Board of Education. I feel really strongly about this. The role of the Board of Education is to decide what students need and what is of educational value and what our kids are gonna need when, you know, ten, twenty years down the road to do jobs that we don't even know what those jobs are gonna be yet. And I think we really need to make sure that people are staying, you know, in their areas of expertise. So I just, I don't think that, um, I don't think that we should be making evaluations about what's effective, what's not effective, what has value for educational value and what doesn't. Those decisions are for the Board of Education to make. Um, and, and that's where I, I want them to be made. Um, and financial decisions are different. What's fiscally responsible and, and what's being run in a financially effective way? That's a different question. Um, so thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, Laura. Any other public comment?
Yes, if I could.
Betsy, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. Uh, Betsy McElvein, one-two-seven Long Meadow Hill Road. Um, I am, um, Chairman of the Library Board, although my comments tonight are not the opinions or certainly an, an action of the Library Board at the moment. Um, I wanted to provide you a little bit more information about the Brookfield Library Foundation, which Mr. Saluga commented on. Um, the Library Foundation is a very different organization than what you propose to discuss later on. Foundation is a standalone five-on-one C three organization set up primarily to raise funds to help support the building of a new library. Um, it's been in existence since the last financial crisis of two thousand nine, when we stopped raising money for a new library. Um, and we don't have a lot of money and we do not feel the need to have to report every contribution. There have been very few. We have less than a hundred thousand dollars at the moment and probably a lot less than what we thought we had. But it is a very different organization than what you're talking about. It is not under the control of the board, of the Library Board. Um, it operates separately. So I thank you for that and I have to tell you that I get exhausted just watching you people work. Uh, and I, and that also means that I appreciate everything that you do and all the hard work you're putting into this process. I know it's not easy for any of you or for any of us watching, so good luck and stay safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? No other public comment. Okay, I'm gonna make a comment on the public comment. One, we are looking at this financially, uh, strictly financially on what the town can afford. Uh, so we're not looking to make decisions on cutting of programs or targeting a program for cut. I appreciate the comments about it and, and about all trying to work together, but let, I want to be clear that our purview and our, our thought process is strictly on the financial responsibility of the town. So I'd like to make that clear. All right, I have a little presentation I'd like to run through. So Dan, if you could throw it up, it won't take long. All right, roll onto the next screen. So review at a last meeting. We talked with Steve, Marcia. We had a revenue projected of over four hundred K under budget of current year. Next year, we also had a projection, which is the worst case scenario. Steve is, you know, we've talked about it. This is worst case. Over seven hundred K down for the next year's budget. Our tax collection reduced from ninety-nine point oh seven to ninety-eight point five. The mill rate would required would bring us to carry the current budget would be a five point two-three with the loss of revenue. We asked the, the first selectman and his team to go back and construct the budget. We call it the COVID budget. Steve came back to us the next day. We asked the BOE to, to also come back to us to try to help. They declined and said it was a BOF responsibility and we'll review what the BOF, uh, would have to say. So basically that's a review of where we were. All right, next slide. So we talked in the last meeting about an iterative process. Uh, Steve had put these words together and I actually liked them a lot about the process. We don't know where we're heading. We don't know what we have in front of us. This is a budget I think that we gotta discuss and decide on. It's not gonna be a, a set in stone budget. It's gonna be a set and review budget. And I think that's part of what Steve's thought process is and I'll let Steve chime in, but we have different vehicles of which when we set this budget that we can increase during the year based on the revenue receipts, based on expenditures. And again, we had talked about this last meeting, so I just wanted to, to discuss it briefly and Marcia used the word. It read, I don't even know how to pronounce it. Go ahead, Marcia. What's the word?
Um, I have trouble with that too. Iterative.
That one. Thank you.
Very good.
So we have vehicles. I mean, we're talking about cuts, reductions. We're looking at worst case things. But we have tools that within the first selectman, the Board of Finance, uh, we can supply funds during the year, contingencies, additional revenues, the use of surpluses. So I want people to understand if we do set a budget, we're looking at ways that it can adapt during the course of the year as we understand the COVID, uh, depression as we'll call it, recession. Next slide. So this is the, the budget that we asked the, the selectman to come out with. He worked very hard with this team. Uh, this, these numbers, basically, I want to just bring out three numbers in this process. The overall increase is a one point seven per six increase in the mill rate. The town increased their overall spending year on year by point three one and the schools in, in this budget, proposed budget would receive an increase of two point three four percent. This is what was proposed. It's not been voted on yet, but this is what, when we asked Steve to go back and do some hard work, they did the hard work and here, here's what we've come up with. So go ahead. Next slide. So considerations, I did a little bit of review here, comparisons, and we'll go through the slides. Revenue of impacts, BOE, the biggest driver in the budget, feedback from taxpayers' letters, some actions that other towns are taking and a brief summary. Next. So this came from the CCM, uh, the Connecticut, uh, presentation that they did. And I just thought there was a few numbers here that were interesting to me. If you look at the Great Depression, the fall in the GDP and the unemployment peak, thirty percent and twenty-five percent respectfully. The Great Recession of two thousand and eight, four point three percent GDP loss, thirteen percent unemployment. And the current COVID, where we're at, twenty-three point five percent fall in GDP and a twenty percent unemployment peak. It just shows that this period that we're in is something that we have to take seriously and we are taking seriously. And, and it, it shows magnitude of the numbers are really large, even though they're on a short duration. They're at a very large numbers in comparison to the, the past recessions and depression. Next. So if you lined up the numbers against the tax revenue collected, you could see in two thousand and eight, we had a ninety-eight point nine and we decreased from the previous year. This year, two thousand twenty, we're, we're coming back off the two thousand nineteen. You could see that we had a point two-three reduction already. So we, we don't know where we're gonna trend and I think this is where Steve and Marcia looked at the worst case scenarios on revenue because it could track similar, that we're gonna be looking at another year of down collections. If you look at two thousand and nine, it was down ten percent. All right, didn't come back until two thousand and twelve. It didn't come back to where we were at. So Steve and Marcia got a lot of managing to do on the revenue side. There's something, they have a lot of calculations to do and it's not easy for them. So we gotta take this into account. Next step. So now if we look at the Board of Ed historical increases over twelve years, this was taken from the superintendent's presentation. If you look over the past twelve years, the average Board of Ed increase has been two point two eight percent. In this budget, we're proposing two point three four percent increase. We are now over the average. Now I know there's extra things that have come in, different details into play, but if you look at a twelve-year history, we're above the average. If you also notice coming out of the two thousand eight Great Recession, we had two years of one point three and a negative point two-six to help offset the, the, the recession point of view. So you're looking at when we were in it, we had very low increases. The year we came out, the third year, it was a higher increase. If you look at the two point three four percent increase, it also falls right in the middle of the thirteen years. So is it really cuts? Is it really reductions or are we still have an increase of two point three four percent? Not saying that's sufficient. I'm not making judgment here. I'm just saying statistically over thirteen years. Next. So feedback from tax letters. We've gotten a whole lot of letters like crazy amount and it's awesome that we're getting the feedback we are getting. You have people that are saying zero percent tax increase. Town doesn't have the authority to raise taxes without a vote. Unemployment rates historical high. People on fixed incomes can't afford continuous tax increases. We're in a pandemic. We need to cut taxes. Irresponsible action taken by the BOF to raise taxes is in a lot of these emails who are irresponsible. Now you go to the same letter saying keep the budget at three point five percent, which will result in a revenue right five point two-three. Need to keep funding for our students. The schools have suffered in the past. The increase has very little impact on homeowners. Two hundred and forty dollars of twenty bucks per month on an average value home. We need to ensure growth of Brookfield. We are in a pandemic and we need to spend our way out of it. Again, they, a lot of these letters then would be irresponsible action by the BOF to reduce taxes. So most of our letters are saying we'd be irresponsible one way or the other. Uh, we're, we're trying to find the best way possible through this process. Please keep the correspondence coming, but I want you to see that this is a good summary of where we're at on this. Next one, please. So what are other towns doing? Two other prominent towns in the area. We've been proactively reaching out to other towns. Brianna has written to many Board of Finance, uh, Chairpeople. We've written to selectmen's of other towns. And, and one town came back and said they were felt uncomfortable passing a point six percent tax increase on voters because they had no ability to ratify the budget through a vote. So they were struggling with the point six tax percent tax increase. Now again, each town is different. Each town, as Steve has mentioned, that managing it through different funds, they have different vehicles other than what Brookfield has. But again, this is a strategy. They had, they're looking to get to a zero percent budget increase and the BOE was helping them by reducing their budget by four fifty K on their side without being asked. Town two, they were looking at reducing to one point two for the town, one point five for the BOE. Looking to get to a zero percent mill rate increase. They're also looking at, if you look in the highlight, substantial restructuring reduction to the fi- fiscal year twenty-two school and town expenses to accommodate this reality. So they're seeing this impact dragging into future years, not just the one-year thing, but a strain on our resources going forward in the next few years. And then that would also be a, a struggle for Steve, Steve as well in this process that this is gonna cause real tough decisions to be made over time in leadership. All right, next. So in summary, the proposed budgets seems to be at like one point seven-six right now. It actually falls between the midpoint of the, the zero and three point five-six. Again, meeting taxpayers' concerns exactly middle of the, of what we're at. Majority rules. We are only point zero zero one percent of the voting that come out to vote making this decision. Six people are making the decision for six thousand people. I, I want people to understand that we are looking at everything. Steve and Marcia are working extremely hard with us to look at every type of financial model. Steve and Marcia are producing so much data for us to look at that because this is unprecedented decision made by six people. And, and we don't know where it's gonna go and we're trying to work, do the best and work together. Again, the BOE, this is an increase of two point three four percent. We're all talking about cuts, reductions. It's still an increase. Is it enough? We don't know. We're trying to work together to find that number, but again, it's still an increase. And, and we have to focus on what is the number and to get there. What we need to do, in my opinion, is to come up with the, this fluid budget that we can work. We need to provide and all sit at the table as a group. We're not getting it there yet. We're getting two groups together. We're not getting the third group to our board, to our table to sit down. This is a crisis. We need to let Steve and our leaders have the tools to best manage this and we need to sit down as a group. And I, I think that we're, we're, we're getting there, but I think we need more support to make financial decisions. So I think that was it. Uh, next. All right, so what's next? We need to vote and approve on the budget in the capital. We need to present to the town hearing. We need to understand the impact of no school and the possibility of savings. We need to review and make corrections if needed to the budget and finalize and set the, the mill rate. And we need buy-in from all of our boards and lead the community through the difficult decisions and take into account every taxpayer's thoughts and opinions, not just a few. And with that, you have my presentation. I'll take comments. Steve, you can start. How's that?
Okay, fine. I'm, I'm, you know, I, I discussed this Monday night at the Board of Select meeting. Um, we did create the budget that the Board of Finance requested and tried to get as close to the one point five percent that you requested. Uh, because we had such a cut in our estimate of the revenues, really, really hard to do. So we came up with the one point seven-six. I think that is good, but my personal opinion is, and I'm just putting this out to you, I think we took too much from the schools. With the special education spending they have, I think we need to add something more for the schools. And, um, Marcia has put together a presentation and I want, you guys have heard my opinions. You know exactly where I am. You have this budget and you know it inside and out. Um, but we, we put together a little presentation. Marcia's gonna give it to you over. Uh, we went and did some work. She did some work with the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association and gathered some data from some of the consultants. And I'd like her to give that to you so you have a better feel for where we're gonna, where we might be in the next two to three years. So Marcia, you wanna give that presentation?
Um, as soon as Glenn is ready. I think he might have been going around the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you wanna go around the table, Glenn? Sorry.
Yeah, let's just go quick. Anybody else wanna comment? Nope. Wow. I expected somebody to say something. All right, let's go, Marcia.
All right. Let me just share the screen here. Why is it not sharing?
This is primarily to give you background of what's happened in the past, where we might possibly end up and to give us a little comfort level as to where we should put this budget.
All right. All right, so, um, last week you asked us to develop a budget, uh, based on the financial best practices. Uh, and we wanted to go through our thought process and some of the best, the financial best practices for governments in a time of uncertainty and, and, um, um, we went to the tried and true sources. The biggest place that financial best practices come from, from a government is the Government Finance Officers Association, that, um, it is all different levels of government. And, um, thousands and thousands of, of members that, um, so, uh, what are the uncertainties that we're dealing with? We, we all know that the key word is uncertainties, that our primary uncertainty are medical uncertainties, that, uh, will there be a second wave? Will it be a worse wave than what we have? Uh, when will there be a vaccine? Uh, when will things get back to normal and what will normal look like? Um, and that's leading to financial uncertainties that, um, what actions do we need to take? What are the costs? Uh, we don't even know what we're supposed to be doing yet to, um, um, to open things back up again. Um, will we have new revenues from FEMA, from the CARES Act? Um, what effects will this have on cash flows to go, to cover the taxes? What shape will a downturn take and the length of a recovery? And then Moody's anticipates that we'll be moderately affected of the, of the public finance sectors that, um, uh, luckily, in this case in Connecticut, we have property taxes as our base and that's a little more stable than income taxes and others, but still that, um, um, we will have, uh, the, um, effects from this, um, in Moody's opinion. Um, that how uncertain is it? Well, uh, we're not certain about that either. Economists talk in terms of different. Economists talk in terms of different letter shape models. The red lines in the graphs represent the expenses. The blue lines in the graphs represent the revenue. The changes in the revenue represent how different scenarios might play out. And no one can predict which model will represent this crisis. Uh, we're gonna talk briefly about each one, but we, we need to understand that there are different best practices for different financial strategies depending on the type, the length, and the severity of any downturn. And you can see here that, um, there, there are different, um, uh, shapes there in terms of the little V shape where we go down and pop back up. There's the big V shape where we go down and it takes a while to pop up. This is either called the big V or the U. There's a W shape where we go down, pop up, go down, and pop up again. And then there's an L shape where we go down and it takes us a long time to pop up. That, so if we talk about these, that, um, uh, the little, um, the little V shape, we're just gonna go through them quickly, knowing that we don't know where we're ending up. We're on our downward slide right now for any one of these. Um, and so what are the characteristics? This would be our best case scenario, the economy will rebound, uh, quickly. Uh, there'll be minimal long-lasting damage. Um, what would cause this one to occur? That we have effective testings for, for COVID. Um, we have effective treatment of the virus and no second wave of the virus. So there's nothing financially that we can control, we're just waiting. That, um, and what is the outlook for this being the model? Um, China seems to be rebounding quickly, or so they say. The stimulus package should help promote this model. Uh, Ernst &amp; Young, one of the big four CPA firms, uh, did a survey, um, of, uh, companies. And 38% of companies believe this will occur. And, um, um, it depends on the medical community, um, containing COVID and doing that soon. Um, the little one, the next one is the big V or the U-shaped model. Um, recovery takes a little longer. Um, the Great Recession, um, was a V shape, it lasted 19 months. Um, it could mean that recovery would not start until late, uh, 2020 or early 2021. That, um, how would this occur? That it takes longer to get, um, the surge in cases under control? That, um, it might occur if there, uh, many businesses go bankrupt or there are fewer jobs when we're reopening. And it may occur if the consumers are not competent to start spending right away. Um, the outlook for this, Ernst &amp; Young, the companies believe, 54% of the companies, um, believe that this will occur, um, which kinda tells us that they're probably not gonna be the companies that are out spending right away. Um, some believe that economy is opening at a, a measured pace, or people being able to go slowly back to normal would also cause, um, uh, this scenario, which is just a prolonged downturn. We have the W-shaped model, um, where the economy starts to, um, recover and then falls into a second decline, uh, which creates the W shape. That, um, if we end this, um, um, our measures too early, that this could occur because of a second outbreak in the virus. Um, and it could also occur if we, um, go back in and there's bankruptcies and, and defaults that, um, uh, that we have to deal with. Um, uh, and then the Washington Post is starting to think that there's a growing possibility of this. Uh, mostly because there's a number of retailers that, um, have announced that they're on the edge here. We've got, uh, um, the new reporting for the first quarter coming out. Um, and a growing concern over a, a second outbreak in the fall. And then the last one is, um, the final one is, um, the L-shaped model. And that's the worst case of any of these models, that the growth, um, just falls and doesn't recover for years. And, and, uh, the biggest example of this is Japan's lost decade in the 1990s, um, where it was 10 years of, uh, slow growth to come back. That, um, it could occur if we can't control, uh, COVID. Um, there's not a lot of support for this one. Uh, the companies, the EY survey, uh, showed about 8% of the companies, um, uh, talking about this. So these are all the things that we have to look at when we're setting a budget. We know we're sliding down, we don't know when, how it's gonna come back up. And it was said earlier, there are different best practices for financial strategies depending on the type, the length, and the severity of any downturn. A little V-shaped downturn requires just short-term adjustments, while an L-shaped downturn would require more long-term structural adjustments. So let's look at some of the short to midterm adjustments that we could be, uh, could do and uh, we should be thinking about and, and have been thinking about as part of that budget that, that we've presented. Um, long and short-term modeling, we've already developed some of these. We're very fortunate to have our 10-year model in place coming into this, so we have a financial plan of where we're going and how we need to get there. Um, we also have a short-term model for our strategy, which we just recently developed. These give us a basis to play out different what-if strategies. One of these strategies we've been working with is what if we balance the budget with one-time revenues, like fund balance? How does that, um, how bad does that make the year-end 2022 budget increase? Um, the other thing that, um, we're working on as of last week is additional metrics reporting. That, uh, there are additional metrics we'll wanna report, um, in a recovery dashboard. These will allow us to drill deeper and quicker into the numbers each month. Uh, some of the thoughts include the tax revenues, a tax collector, and I started working on this one, uh, last week after Wednesday night's meeting. Um, building permits, that possibly we can develop reporting based on permits even before the revenue is generated. Uh, recreation and senior center class enrollments, allocations between, um, one-time revenues and, um, uh, and one-time expenses and recurring revenues and expenses. And then fund balance history and projections that, um, um, maintaining flexibility, since we don't know what's coming, we must build flexibility into our budget. Some governments are doing this by building quarterly budgets. We don't have that option. As we have said, we need to think of this year's budget as an iterative process. Nothing makes us clearer than the last four weeks of Board of Finance meetings. There have been significant changes every single week. Um, we would like to have the 2021 budget discussion on the board agendas every month going forward. That, uh, we need to, we don't really want to, but we need to. Uh, we don't have the option of cutting a budget once it passes, so we must, uh, plan for the worst and add to the budget, uh, as we learn more. That, and preserving cash, this would be all the low-hanging fruit that can help us through the short, uh, downturn. This is one of the best practices if it's just gonna be a short, um, a short downturn. Um, this includes reducing costs and spending, delaying payments to keep the cash longer, looking for new resources, such as implementing new or revised fees, increasing the allocation between the funds, uh, monetizing assets such as user fee, uh, fees for fields, uh, renting building space if we have extra. And, um, although we hope we don't need to, uh, we have to look at the, um, um, be aware of the long-term adjustments that, uh, um, if we need to develop a long-term, uh, recovery plan, uh, consider priority-driven budgets where you look at specific programs, um, um, in the whole budget and decide which ones are we gonna do well and which ones are we gonna cut. Uh, tightening, um, capital, um, improvement planning. Um, and additional long-term scenario planning. So on the, the left are the short-term things, if it's a little V. And on the right are the longer-term things, if it's an L. And in between, uh, we're playing it by ear a little bit, and these are, um, these are best practices. That, um, and so where do we stand now? That, um, we've already seen the revenue drop sharply in the, in the current year. Uh, it's reasonable to expect the revenues, uh, will be down for the next year. Um, right now, we're just in the beginning stages. That, um, we can't predict what the model will be, it'll be at least the little L. A little V, sorry, we need to be ready in case it gets worse by remaining flexible and adaptable. That, um, and we must remember that we're accountable to our actions to the rating agencies. We talked about this last week. That our decisions now will affect our rating in the future, we must remain vigilant now. So in the future, we, we, um, continue to have the AAA rating when we finance the new school. Um, what have we done already? That, um, the town leadership has, has acted quickly and already been utilizing, uh, the financial best practices in this early phase. Um, we have re-forecasted our 20 and 21 revenues. Uh, we've used one-time techniques to balance the budget, but not so many as to jeopardize being able to pass a budget in 2022, when a double year's increase would hurt the taxpayers. Uh, we've developed additional modeling, uh, to review scenarios. Um, we've prepared an iterative, uh, budgeting process for the year-end, uh, 2021. Um, we've added a large contingency for COVID costs due to this year, uh, to this year and next. Uh, we know some of the costs, but we're just starting to learn about the cost for reopening the town buildings and schools. Uh, we're anticipating that the town will pay the cost for the town and the schools out of this contingency. Um, well, we've cut spending in 20 and, um, um, 21. Uh, we implements, implemented some of the financial, uh, best practices to remove money from the departments in year-end 20, uh, 20 to drive savings. Uh, we're working with, um, we're working to quantify what the cost and savings, um, and report that out on, on at least a weekly basis. Um, we've developed worst-case budgeting, um, to use as our basis for the budget for 2021. We, we will ask the Board of Ed to provide, uh, the aforementioned initiative levels for adding money back when it's time. Um, and it's important to note, had the revenue not dropped and we had not needed to cover the cost, uh, for COVID, the COVID budget we have proposed, uh, based in your instructions last week, would have, uh, left the mill rate virtually fat, uh, virtually flat had it not been for, for the revenue and the additional costs. And we still have a lot more work to do, um, uh, for the future. We know that Moody's has advised the long-term impact for each rating will reflect both the depth and severity of the impact of this crisis, which we cannot control, as well as an analysis of each issuer's, uh, mitigation strategy and capability. So that's where we really need, uh, that strategy and capability, and we really need to show, uh, what we're doing and, and, uh, think it out. That, uh, we all need to work together to continue what we've started in these steps. We need to continue to be proactive in our mitigation strategy. We need to continue to review, uh, the 2020 budget forecasts. We need to pass a, a, a tough baseline budget for 2021. Uh, we need to develop an initiative levels for adding back in phases. Uh, we need to review the 21 budget monthly and continue to be responsible and flexible and adapting. Uh, we need to develop additional make, uh, metrics reporting. We need to continue to incorporate, uh, to work to incorporate the best practices. And we need to develop a formal long-term strategy for the future. Possibly, we don't need that, uh, for this, if it's a little V. Um, but, uh, it would be great to have in place a number of, uh, the big cities. Um, as soon as they said we're in a downturn, they pulled out the book and said, okay, these are what we do. That, uh, um, they already had the, the, um, their strategy in, in place, and that would be a great place for us to get to. Any questions on that?
If, if I can just add a little bit here, um, Marsha and I went over this in some detail today. Over the next two years, it's going to be very clear which towns manage this properly and which did not. We're already seeing some towns, and I won't mention them. Uh, one of them is having a 7.6% increase in their operating costs. Uh, 4% increase in their school costs and getting a zero mill rate. And they're doing it by rating their general fund. The rating agencies are gonna look at those towns and say they do not have the financial backbone to make the hard decisions, which I think Brookfield has, and I think you guys have supported the town in doing that. Especially with the $63 million borrowing coming up. We, we have no choice but to plan very carefully, work on a worst-case scenario, and then add back, as Marsha said, when, where we can, where you think it's reasonable, protect our general fund, and then move forward. Thanks.
Thank you, anybody else, comments?
I have a question. This, uh, 2.34% BOE increase that's semi-proposed, not proposed, whatever. Does that take into account, uh, the additional proposed savings from schools not reopening?
So when we talked about, uh, those savings, we called it Ricky's model, that, uh, we talked about taking those savings and whether we spend them this year or next year and put them into a, um, contingency, uh, for, um, for COVID costs. And that's also how we would be able to, um, um, reallocate some of the money. That if we find out the costs are low and the revenue is going back up, um, that would be the pot of money that, for that iterative process.
Yeah, so for, right now, I'm sorry, Mark, but right now, I think the schools predicted another $498,000 in savings through year-end this year. So, uh, my, our, it's not in the budget right now because the, the schools only got announced closed, uh, Monday. So we would add that back into contingency and allow that to be uh, one of our backups in case we have additional costs or new programs or whatever.
Right, so what I'm hearing is no, that's not automatically incorporated into this 2.34, which is good. That's what I wanna hear. Um, and the second part of my question was gonna be, did they update, give you an update this week of, uh, where they expect that savings to, to come in?
Not yet.
498, that was 498 still from last week.
Right.
Okay. And we, so we don't know whether that's changed or not. Okay.
So I have a, can I go? Okay, I have a couple of questions on, on, on that. I, I'm surprised, first of all, I'm surprised that the, that 490, what you, the, the answer to that, there is, so with the additional $500,000 contingency that you already put in this budget, you'd propose putting in another 500 to make it a million-dollar contingency?
That's what we had talked about as the model, yes.
That's what we had talked about, yeah.
Okay, so then, so the, I, I thought that the 500 that was in there was the 498 that was being referenced from the, from the, from the savings?
No.
No.
Wow. Okay.
That would give us an incredible amount of flexibility. And if we didn't use those funds, and I agree with Marsha, we've talked about this at length, this iterative process is every month we look at this, do we have additional expenses? Like today, I was on a call with the governor's office with 169 other mayors. And one of the comments that came up was, there is now a pool of cash that has come from the feds outside of FEMA is my understanding, we're trying to get details on this, to pay for PPE and other COVID-related expenses. That would be great, because we'd probably get that a lot quicker than we would the 75% of FEMA. But none of that's included in this budget either. So things are changing on a daily basis. It's, it's almost mind-bending, how many new executive orders come out, how many changes come out? The things that we're doing, it, it does change almost on a daily basis.
So, all right, so just to be clear, you'd be proposing a million-dollar contingency for COVID?
Yeah, we would support that.
Wow, that's, that's something to think about, all right.
But could I just add that, um, um, we would propose that putting it into contingency or, or, or ho- holding it aside, um, we would also have to think about, do we, we had talked earlier about, do we use it all in one year? Or do we use it in, in multiple years? So I wouldn't say that we would necessarily redo, release all that contingency unless, except for the worst-case scenario. I would say that we may save that, um, put it in, um, and then spread it over three years to, so that the 22 and 23 budgets are not, um, um, over 5%.
Yeah, because you know, these are one-time revenues, we're cutting the budget. We get these one-time revenues, they're gonna go away, and we don't wanna put ourselves behind the eight ball next year where you're looking at almost flat increase, a flat budgets, but still a bigger increase than we would like.
What one-time revenues?
This, this 498 would be. This this four hundred and ninety eight would be a one time revenue for next year.
I see.
Right?
Kind of, all right.
Well, hopefully one time, that's assuming we don't get a this COVID back in October and have to shut the schools down again.
Yes.
All right, so my last question and then is is directly to Steve. And you said two things that, at least in my interpretation, were contradictory to each other. So I wanna I wanna pick your brain a little bit. When before Marsha spoke, you said that the budget presented was the worst case scenario, and you thought that too much was taken away from the schools. And then after Marsha spoke, you said that you have to plan for a worst case scenario and then add back as needed. So my question is, do you think we took too much away from the schools now, or should we plan for, or would you propose planning for the worst case and adding with the contingency that we have that you're proposing?
Yeah, I I can see how you think that would be contradictory. I think, given all the costs that the schools have had, the special education costs particularly, I think the budget that we crafted for the Board of Finance is too low on the school side. They originally asked for seven percent, almost seven. The Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen agreed on five percent. Now we're down to two point three four percent. And I think we're we're running the edge here. We really are. If we take the four ninety eight and put it into contingency, I'd be much more comfortable if that was earmarked for any expenses the schools had that they needed additional money for.
Okay. Can we even earmark money for certain things, certain buckets of money for?
Exactly, no, in contingency you can't. But we can talk amongst each other and say, okay, here's our priorities. Here's the things we want to look at next year.
I understand, but from a Board of Education perspective, they couldn't count on that money on the six of us saying that's our our prerogative.
We could deal with it through a non-lapsing fund. I think that that we should come up with the idea and then figure out how to make it work.
You could do a non-lapsing, but then
But that's only one percent of their whole budget, though, the non-lapsing fund.
Included, increase it to two, Ricky.
Oh, didn't know that. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I have a couple, actually. So regarding, you know, the economy and, you know, with these different models, have we reached out to, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, any of the small business associations to kind of get a feel for how our local businesses are doing? I mean, if the distancing restrictions lift and and people can, I know that some stores have adapted to online shopping and offering stuff like that. I know, you know, landscaping companies are still able to operate as essential workers, and you know, there seems to be a lot in the
Yeah, we've been working
Have we gotten a feel for, you know, what percentages, you know, imminently impacted versus those who are definitely getting a financial hit but expect to rebound?
The businesses that are getting hit hard are the hair salons, the barbers, those that had to shut down you know, completely. The restaurants in town are doing fair to middling, I would say. The ones that are more dedicated towards takeout, the Brookfield Market, Little Bit Eatery, the Brookfield Deli, they seem to be doing okay, they're surviving. The small, the smaller businesses, you know, the barbers and things are getting killed. We are now working on, I passed an executive order today to allow the suspension of a lot of our zoning rules so that restaurants under governor's executive order can have outdoor dining, you know, socially distancing, and cutting all the red tape on doing that. So for example, Uccinella's or Portobello could take over part of their parking lot and put tables outside, and we're gonna support that as long as it's safe. So we have our fire marshal, the chief police, director of public health are all gonna pass over these plans. And we've eliminated a lot of the zoning regulations, not eliminated, but suspended them so that we can move quickly so that when they're able to open, which is hopefully the twentieth, they're gonna be able to hit the ground running. And we need to open, and we need to support these businesses as much as possible, and we're trying to do that. If we can do that, I think town residents, town residents have been really good about supporting our local restaurants. It's the barbers of the nail salons and the ones that are permanently shut that are hurting, but we're trying to get them all back as quickly as we can.
And just to be clear, on those different models, those are more than just Brookfield. Those would be more of a regional, like multi-state type.
Yeah.
The other, the other question, you know, regarding the the uncollected taxes, do we expect that once, you know, you mentioned last week that the tax sales have been suspended by per executive order? Do we expect that once that executive order is lifted that we might see some of that revenue come back in?
Yeah, absolutely, I think so. If they, if the governor lifts that order, we'll go. There are some people who, on a regular basis, we have to send them a letter telling them we're gonna sell their property to pay their taxes. I think we're also gonna say, remember, all the taxes that we're we're losing right now, we have not lost them. What we've done is push them down in future years. Right? We virtually collect ninety nine point nine percent of our taxes. Unless you have a car and you move out of town and you didn't pay your taxes and you move into another state, we probably won't catch those taxes. But all the real estate taxes, personal property taxes, we have a very strong record of collecting those. The question we have right now, and what we're having a difficulty with, is the timing of the receipt of those taxes. And so, yeah, we're we, I would say we're gonna still collect over ninety nine percent of our taxes. It's just some of it won't be next year. It might be the year after or the year after that.
If I might, Steve, my thought on those taxes, that's a, that's a help to cushion us in the budget on twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. It's not a twenty twenty one answer.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think you're absolutely right.
In in regards to the, you know, considering long term, I definitely think we need to be proactive on that. I think, you know, planning this budget with the expectation of, you know, the the big V or the L curve. You know, I feel like it'd be premature to assume that that would be the situation. I think we need to see what happens once, you know, some of the social distancing o- opens up, we, you know, they predict that this summer with, you know, people becoming more mobile and being outside, you know, we'll have a better, on the medical side of it, to just see what happens with the, how people handle the virus and and
Yeah, and and it's good, the the testing is getting much better. Today, we arranged with a local firm, Docs. They have twenty different locations in Connecticut, and they're like urgent care. We've arranged for them that any of our first responders and essential workers, police, firemen, EMS can go and get a test within the next few days as soon as they sign up, and they get results within twenty four hours. That kind of testing and doing the antibody testing and doing the contact tracing is going to help a lot. I don't know if it'll be perfect, no one does. We may, my guess is we're gonna get a little V or a W. You know, once we start to open up again, we may have to clamp things down a little bit. But I think we will get through it. I think as soon as we get a vaccine, then we're really back to almost normal.
That's pretty far out, though. And I guess my my last question is, you know, the the process of, you know, adding funding, funding back in. How, how will we approach that? I mean, one of the issues that we came up with this year was if we started getting, you know, several small requests, you know, particularly from like the Board of Education to add back in, once it reaches a certain point, it goes to town meeting. And are we going to address requests as they come in, or are we going to wait until there's a certain threshold before we give them?
I think we'd have to discuss that, but I I I'm not, I think we need to look at this on, again, as as Marsha said, on an iterative basis and on a month to month basis. I still don't know, and I don't think anyone does. When the schools reopen, if they're required to maintain social distancing, I don't know how we're gonna do that. I I honestly don't. You know, have kids come in every other day, who knows, have two shifts a day. There are so many different options there. And some of them would probably cost us a lot of money. So I don't really know the answer, Aileen, I really don't, but we're looking at every possible option.
But Aileen, if your, if your question was more of a of a procedure question, the big contingency, the reason we want a big contingency is then we're just transferring within our budget that we can transfer from one line to another, from contingency to Board of Ed or contingency to OPEB or wherever we decide to do it. And we're not limited on the amount that we do as a as a transfer from one line to the other. So that's the reason for the big contingency. The second, and and there's nothing that the that limits that in the charter other than, I believe there is a limit on contingency in the charter.
And the good thing about that, and what I like about it, is if we do transfers in the contingency, every single item has to be approved by both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance.
Yep. And then the second thing that we could do is if we have additional revenues that additional revenues. So anyway, if if we're limited on the contingency transfer, we can also manipulate that to to say, okay, well, we're going to pull it in and out by manipulating it through the account so that what we don't want to do is do a lot of additional appropriations. That's our last choice. So our first choice is contingency and or manipulating transfers to for cash for capital. Our second choice is if we have additional revenues, we would do an adjustment to add to revenues and add to expenditures that at least then we're showing that we're still having a balanced budget that we know we're getting more revenues and we're putting in more expenditures. We do have charter limitations on that one, so it's it's a little less desirable. But I mean, the worst that happens is we, I think we have to call a town meeting. And then the third one would be if we just add and take it out of fund balance. That would be the least desirable. But it's still possible, and there are still limitations in the charter on that one.
I think that's all for now.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, Dan, throw up the decision tree, please.
Wait, can I go? I just want to reiterate, we can't take money out of the budget if things get worse. If we get into a a W or a U or, God forbid, an L, we we can add money in if things get better. We can't take money back out if this thing hits us again. We gotta remember that. You have to plan for the worst. And we can't plan a budget, in my mind, based on a little V. We don't know. We can hope we're gonna be in a little V. We certainly can't plan on that, and most of the experts are telling us that we're, that's not where we are. So I just, I'm very, very cautious, even about, while I appreciate the hard work Steve and Marsha have done to get the budget where they are, I'm still very cautious about that. I I really am. I also want to reiterate, I I still think we should take a little bit of money out of the general fund and add it to the, you know, Board of Ed or town or something, whether that brings the the tax increase down or whether it stays there and we, they get a little more money. But I'm very leery of this.
Any other comments? I'll add to a comment to that is we're gonna look at the decision tree, right before that, though, Mark, on your comment on the general fund, fund. When we talked to the consultant or the advisor, I thought the two weeks ago, I'm losing track of weeks, we were at ten point something percent general fund, and we had three hundred and thirty thousand above the ten percent mark was all we had that was above the ten percent market current budget ratios. Now that we're increasing our budget, does that reduce that number down a little bit? And what do we really have before we get on that fine line of losing percentage points on a sixty three million dollar loan?
Well, as he said very clearly, ten percent is not a magic number. You, I don't, I don't want us to be much farther below that. This is an unprecedented time. This is, you know, if you were at nine and a half percent, you know, he said you could be under ten, and it wasn't necessarily going to affect you. It wasn't, ten was not a magic number.
My feeling there is the rating agencies will look at us and say, did they take the harder road and protect their general fund? Because remember, we're gonna borrow money for twenty or thirty years, and they want to know towns will stand by their commitments to support a strong financial base and a strong balance sheet. And, you know, a lot of towns in Connecticut have taken the easy out, and Mark, I'm not arguing with you on this and on that. But to take two or three million dollars out of your general fund, that's, in my opinion, just crazy.
I wasn't, I wasn't anywhere near two million dollars.
No, you weren't, but I I think the same theory applies. The minute we start touching our general fund, unless it's a dire circumstance, I would be against. I'm sorry, I just would.
I think it's something to consider. I'm not saying we should do it, but I think it's something to consider. The big thing he said, in addition to the amount, which I think Mark was talking about a couple, maybe thinking about a couple hundred thousand dollars here or there, which would make a difference to certain budget line items. He also said, the financial advisor, that if there was a plan to replenish it over a period of time, then it not only would it not be looked upon negatively, it might be looked upon positively, is that you're taking the steps and you have a plan in place. So if that plan was that we're planning for a ninety eight point five percent collection rate, but if it really was ninety nine, then the incremental would be put back in. Or other types of 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 statements that can go into the notes or the minutes that this is how we expect to plan to replenish the couple hundred thousand that we took, might be a way to something that we need to talk about. I I I agree with Mark.
It's about to top that, Dan and Mark, and I appreciate, these are one time revenues again. Now that we start pumping in a million extra dollars, your mill rate is gonna jump a point and a half out the gate next year, just to catch up to the expenditure rate.
No, so so basically, so again, we're talking about the specific now, but it, but right now, we're we're taking a hit on an expected collection decrease. If we use the 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 general fund to mitigate some of that, and that then we wouldn't be taking the hit this year. We would, we would kick that can down the road a little bit. And if we, if if the worst case didn't happen, then we wouldn't, then we'd be in okay shape. If the worst case did happen, then we'd be taking the hit that we'd otherwise be taking this year, next year.
But where's the makeup? Where are you making up? You're banking on extra revenue? Because our expenditures are going up. We know that. I mean, so where's your, where's your payback? You're banking on extra revenue coming?
No, just because you lower the increase in one year of of your tax increase, if if you were, if you would have had a three percent this year and a three percent next year, and you have a because you take some money out of the general fund, you end up with a one, I'm just gonna use random numbers, you end up with a two percent this year, you still could have a three percent next year. It didn't, doesn't have to jump to four percent.
You don't have to have expenditures.
Yeah, and we replace the money that we take out of the general fund in time or with extra revenue. We don't replace that money next year. We don't double dip into it next year.
Replace it with potentially extra revenue, replace it potentially with expense decreases. You replace it potentially with excess in a million dollar contingency. There's, there's different potentials, or things are worse than expected, and we make, continue to make hard choices this time next year.
And if I could just say to make sure that we're all in this, in the math, that we're looking at taking the underage of expenditures and putting it as a contingency next year. That we also are anticipating an underage of revenue. It won't be, if if we move that to put it in contingency next year, those won't offset each other. So when you're thinking about, oh, we have a ten percent, we've got to continue to look at that because if we don't cover the underage of revenue, it's gonna go down automatically because we'll have a loss for this year. So I just want to point that out before you start worrying about that ten percent. I think the best thing to do is to look at the budget, but just remember that in the back of your head. If you're doing calculations of from two weeks ago, that we had three hundred thousand extra, we may be using that to cover the the loss of revenue if if we're following this model where the where the underage of expenditures moves forward.
Right, and in two or three years, you can take the money, the tax money revenue, when it comes in in two or three years, and use that to replenish the general fund. Is one very, and and you could set that as a as as a term for taking the money now, and I think that the the For taking the money now, and I think that the, the companies would look at, you have a plan to replenish it. And if we're able to replenish it with some other unknown source earlier, you do that. But you have the plan to replenish it using the tax money we should be getting this year, but we know we will get in a few years.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure because you were talking about the two weeks ago conversation with the, with the extra 300,000. Which may be gone with the loss of revenue from last week.
Understood.
All right. Let's go back to the tree now. So where do we stand? We gotta, we gotta have this, a, a presentation done by next week. Next Tuesday, we're presenting to the town. So where do we stand on, on the public hearing and back to Dan's decision tree? Changes to, to surplus estimates. The town side is buttoned down. The Board of Ed is meeting tonight. They, they projected 493. We don't know if they're gonna use 90 to pay down the revenue like we talked about. We really don't know. What's upcoming at their meeting? So, um, to point one, we gotta wait. We don't have a choice in the matter. Point two, unused bonded capital estimates. Are they still good, Marcia?
Yes, they are.
Point three, the latest executive order is from Steve. We set it down to us. We have to do this. As a board of finance. We are in this. We have to do this. There are no outs. There will be no votes. There will be anything by the mandate. We have to set this six of us, correct, Steve?
Correct.
All right. Any other, uh, points that we're at right now? All right. So now we have a, a new pro forma budget that Steve presented. On our behalf, we asked him to do it. Steve put it forth. So. Can we put up the first slide? And Marcia, can you put up like the, uh, the overview slide?
Yes.
I think the one that I had that just shows the basics. I don't.
You wanna go to summary, right?
Summary. I think we don't need any details. I read the summary point right now. We have now gotten down to a point where we're D-Day for a public hearing. We, we've gone through four weeks of changes. Each week has changed. Uh. There is so much information coming in on a weekly basis through Steve, through Marcia. We're waiting some information from the Board of Ed, but we need to present something to the town. Uh, we have to also do this presentation and we were talking about a meeting on 5/11 on Monday. That doesn't give us a lot of time to prepare for the town. So we gotta. Decisions tonight.
Glenn, if I may.
Go ahead.
I would like, I, I do want to say I, I thought about, I was the proponent, probably the main proponent of, or the, at least the one that started the discussion of having a meeting Monday. That is unfair to you. You need some time to put. So I, I, I can't, I can't go for a meeting Monday. It's not fair to you.
Well, let's see what the outcome is tonight and then we'll go. I'd rather us come with a decision. So. Let's go around to the table. Mark, you're at the top of the chart that I see on my screen, not at the, just, so go ahead. You've read the budget. Steve has made his comments of where he feels we've fallen short. Uh, go ahead.
Mark agrees with the first selection.
Always.
Uh, I'm, I'm never gonna live that down, am I? Um. I mean, I said my piece a few minutes ago, my numbers that I'm thinking are that we, the. General fund, I want to take $500,000 out of the general fund. I want to give 400 of that to the school. I want to give 100 of that to the town. Uh, and other than that, I want to stay with the budget that Steve, uh, presented. As much as I'd love to say go to zero, that's not appropriate either.
So. You're saying, go, one more time, because I, I didn't process any of that. You want to take 500,000?
500,000 out of the general fund. Give 400,000 of that to the school. So they feel less pain. Give 100,000 of that to the town. So they feel less pain. And go with the, uh, 1.78 budget or whatever it was, the, the point 31 to the town and the point 2.34 to the school. But they get, I, as, I mean, as the tax increase would be 1.78, whatever, but we give, we give them more money and take it out of the contingency fund. That way we've hit the school, we've hit the town hard. And that leaves the million dollar contingency, plus or minus million dollar contingency.
Dan, you're next on the chart.
Not surprised very often, Mark. Um. Though I think, so I came into tonight thinking that. We needed to come up with a way to keep the number where it is, but add more, a, a bit more to the schools. That's, that's where I came in. And I listened to Glenn and Marcia and thought maybe you were right on. Now I'm thinking, I, now I'm back to where I was. I think that there should be a co- some combination of, um. General fund. Using the surplus. Uh, looking at cash capital again and maybe pushing things out. I mean, certain things are required, certain, certain things are responsible, but certain things. Can just be, just take that 10-year capital plan and move it out of here and, and, and just not do it this year. I think some combination can add, um. Balance to the school budget because I do think it got cut a little much. I don't know what the right number is. We don't have those numbers. Um, and it will be a kind of a, a, a shot in the dark, but I think adding some. To that is, is important. Uh, if we can do with keeping the, the 1.76 and kind of splitting the difference between where we were and zero. Seems pretty elegant. Um. Also, I'm, I, I don't know about anybody else, but I am, I'm uncomfortable with a, with a million dollars in contingency. That, that seems like, that, that seems so tempting. So tempting that, that I don't, I don't trust myself or anybody else to, to manage a million dollars.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was trying to be, be quick because people might, and not, not usually quick. My only other thought on the million dollars. Was Marcia had talked about spreading it out over two or three years. Would be to drop the contingency to 700,000. Because we know, we assume, we hope, I guess, that we're not in that long L recession. Uh, that in that third year, we're actually getting the money back from the taxes we missed this year. So that would be the way I think we could drain, drain some money out of that contingency. And then I'd only want to drop a little less out of the general fund.
Let, let, let's get one thing go before we go on to the next person. The million dollars is based on the school giving us 500,000, correct?
Yes.
So we're talking a million dollars, but we don't have a million dollars in our hands. I mean, we're, we're talking like we got a million dollars. We have $500,000 in contingency. Last week, the school came to us and said they had 100,000 and then 50,000 went away within a day. So I mean, are we getting a half a million from the schools? And we're sort of debating a budget around a half a million wish list. Is it a good figure? Is it something we're gonna bank on? Are we getting a half a million dollars from the schools? Cause we're talking about contingencies of a million dollars and right now the contingency is $500,000. And Steve and Marcia, I believe, have said that we would take care of some of the COVID expenses on the school side on that $500,000. So that could, isn't as big as it seems as of today. Am I right or wrong?
Right. Well, isn't 90,000 of that gonna be used for the pay down? Right. So, so that, that, so already dropped to 400 and.
Saying, we're not talking apples to apples.
Right. And potentially they could drop that more, but that does lessen. That does lower their expenses for next year. Still. So though it doesn't get added into contingent, contingency, it does lower their need for the expenses.
Yes, sir.
Right. It doesn't give the town any sort of split, but it is what they're doing or what they could do.
We have different vehicles to handle sliding that money forward. This was the, the Ricky plan. But we could also move it and keep it into the capital non-recurring and not allocate it for next year, just keeping it as unresi- uh. Unallocated fund balance and move that forward. So I think probably that shouldn't be a sticking point. That let's kind of get the concept of what you want and then we can, we can massage it with how. You would feel comfortable moving money forward.
I think we're more concerned with thinking that if, whether or not it's actually gonna be a million dollars, because I don't. I don't feel like it's gonna, and if anything, it might come in at 800,000, you know, potentially.
We have to wait for the.
So, yeah.
But we don't even know when the school's gonna come up with that number. I mean, in fairness to them too, they got school till January or June 30th. So they could get hit with a bill in the third week of June and wipe it out. And, and, and we're sitting there holding, we banked on a half a million dollars. Again, they lost half of their, their extra last week. We were expecting 90, then it dropped 50,000 and they brought in more because of other savings. But I mean, we don't know where that's gonna go and it's not banked money. It's really not banked at all. So I mean, it's hard for me to, to sit here and say, oh, we got a million dollars in contingency. We'll take 300,000 and move it here. We have 500,000 in contingency. That's what we have. As of today. So, Dan, any more comments? Ricky, you're up.
Cool. Um. Marcia and I, um, had a email chain go, uh, probably two weeks ago. When I was going through the capital budget and, um. One thing that stuck out was, uh, the VHS outfield drainage for the baseball field. Because of the timing of the vote, um, it's not a project that, that they can even get to this year. So I proposed that we cut the 260,000 out of the 10-year financing for that. And swap, um. And, and, uh, you know, again, it's, it's not ideal, but my, my thought was, uh, the police. Vehicles and the network switch replacement to actually bond that with 10-year or. To finance that with 10 or five-year financing, just to. Spread that payment out. So we're taking out 261 of financing. Adding 207 of financing. Overall, we're saving $50,000 of financing and we're reducing the current by 207,000. That we could use to split in between town and schools. I would prefer to just. Try to get it to the schools because, uh, town's not losing any services by doing this. Um. Don't know if anybody else has any thoughts about that. Just trying to get a little creative with it.
Yeah. Can I get jump in there? For the 10-year and 20-year long-term bonding, that's not gonna affect this year's budget. And as it stands right now, there are no executive orders to allow, uh, the Board of Select and Board of Finance to adopt the capital budget for borrowing. Unless there, you meet three circumstances. It's an emergency, it's for the public health and welfare, and they're very, uh. High, they're high bars, and I don't think we meet any of those bars at this point in time. So we would still have to have a referendum and a, and a town meeting.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, but we're still low, we're still gonna lower our overall financing by $50,000 by swapping those.
Yeah, but a lot of that for the borrowing, you're gonna pay over 10 years. You're not gonna see a, an immediate hit to the budget. In any one, a huge hit to the budget in any one of those years.
I'm aware, be almost like you're flattening the curve. I'm just, I'm just trying to find some creative ways to get things paid for. I mean, you don't have to agree to it. I, I get it, you know, we can, it's just, I'm just trying to throw some stuff out there just to see how everybody feels about it.
I got you. I just want to make sure everybody understands. Okay.
Anybody else? I mean, any more Ricky?
Um. No, I mean, without knowing what the school is gonna come in with, uh, it's kind of tough to try to finagle more.
Brianna, you're next on the list.
Okay. Uh, yeah. Hard not being on the board for very long and then having this. So, um, I've been writing little notes here and there, but. Uh, you know, I, I don't think there's any great answer. I think, uh, we're gonna have to just. Fall somewhere in the middle like we've been talking about. I really like Mark's idea. About taking some out of the general fund and giving it to the school and the town. Um. I am a little, I, I do think that contingency, that $1 million contingency is high. I think, uh, you can't bank on what the school, the amount of money for the school. Um, I like Ricky's idea of being creative and if there's a way around it with creativity to where we could get to that golden number and everybody gets some back. Um. I, I do think we need to figure out how to add a little bit back into the school. And if that can be worked out with the general fund and some contingency, that would be great. Um. And just correct me if I'm wrong, but. Even after the public hearing on the 12th, we do have the ability to make changes. Up until June. What day in June? Oh, Steve unmuted.
June 4th.
So.
No, 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 no. Don't we gotta present it to the town clerk 10 days before?
You, you have to make a, uh, you have to have a town presentation, but you are allowed to make changes after that.
Okay.
But we have to present it to the town clerk four days before we make a decision, right?
No, no, this budget needs to be at the town clerks by 5:00 PM on June 4th.
So, I guess. So I guess my thought process was is, is hopefully even after the public hearing, would we have a better idea of where the schools are at? Maybe it would give us a little bit more time. It would get us a little more through May. Maybe we'd have a more of a hardened number to work with in the contingency because everybody seems to say we just don't know where their number's gonna fall.
Yeah, but Glenn has to present something that's reasonably close to what we're anticipating gonna do.
I, I don't disagree with that. And I think I'm, I'm happy with, uh, and that's my point. I, I think if we can agree on. Getting a little bit back to the school, Mark, like you said, figuring out how to be creative with the general fund and other means. Taking a better look at the contingency and try to keep it at that 1.6% and present that to the town. And then if for some reason there's surpluses that we, that come up. And the Board of Ed gives us a different number, we can make those adjustments appropriately and maybe not take as much from the general fund. I don't have anything else to say.
Your turn at the, the wand here.
Um. Yeah, I, 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 it's such a big hit to the schools. I mean, we, well, we, it's a big hit to everybody. No offense, Steve. Um.
Yeah.
The. Going down from the basic request where we know that a lot of that increases special ed and it's. You know, mandated costs that they're going to have to pay. Um, I mean, unless we go into distance learning in the fall. And maybe that changes the equation, but I don't think we can go into that mindset. I'm just concerned, you know, if you look at what their investments were, there isn't much in there that's. You know, they're not adding new programs. They're continuing curriculum that's been, you know, started in a certain grade and they're moving, expanding it to the next grades to be continuous. Or, you know, continuing the education programs that are already started. So. There, you know. Everybody talks about things that could be cut and you'd be looking at cutting existing programs. There's nothing, you know, there isn't new stuff in there, um. To take out. And I think that there's been a lot of effort to build the school, you know, the high school backup, um. You know, to a, a good qualification standard, um. And I'm not talking about the NEAS stuff, but, you know, several years ago, um, the schools weren't rated real high and they've really increased. And I think taking. Money from it. And I understand money doesn't grow on trees and, and it's hard getting through all of this. I just feel like that's such a big hit. And I don't. I just don't. I don't. I don't like the idea of going to the general fund as our first. Uh, go, going into the budget, hitting with a hit to the general fund. Um, I, I really think we need to consider. You know, moving a little higher, you know, maybe falling a little higher than the middle, um, of, you know, the voices that we're hearing. So I, I just. It, it's tough. I mean, no. I was looking to see if there's any additional capital that we could postpone, um, you know, unless the road paving, if we could, you know. Roads as much if we could back off for a little bit, a, a year and, and with that money to help offset. Um. You know, is there, are there any other savings that have been found? You know, is there, are there any other savings that have been found on the town side? You know, is there? So for the, the capital projects and all the reserves, what's in the model that we got the other day is the most current numbers?
Yes.
The Ricky's capital idea, if I understood it correctly, would give us about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars more in cash because we would be bonding for the police stuff instead of paying cash for it. Then, so to your point that taking it from someplace else, that might be an alternative.
Yeah, I, I think I'd rather explore something like Ricky's idea than pulling it from the general fund, you know, having that be our last resort.
All right, anything else?
No, I think that's it.
All right, my turn now. Here we go. One, I don't like taking the general fund at all. I, I don't like it as an option. I think once you start dipping there and we're looking to borrow sixty three million dollars, we had a macro burst incident two years ago. We've had this now. We are at a point where we've had two crises in a few years. The rainy day fund against the borrowing of sixty three million dollars scares the heck out of me of we're gonna take three hundred thousand dollars, it is it gonna cost us three million out the back door? I don't see the way every paying it back when I'm looking at the increases, projected increases, loss of revenue. To me, my personal opinion is like banking on overtime to pay back your bills. We're gonna have enough percentage increases, I believe, that we won't be able to pay that back for quite a period of time, my opinion. Concessions, we all talked about concessions and we all went through the process of concessions. The concessions are coming out of Rhodes, coming out of Steve's pocket. Where else can Steve freaking cut? Steve is fifty eight thousand dollars over prior year spending. We are talking, we're going to Steve for concessions and we're not really talking about the school side concessions. And I get we might have cut the school budget too low. This be, might be too low. However, when we look at the bulk of the eight hundred thousand dollars that was Steve's first cut, two hundred thousand was an insurance premium, three hundred thousand was a, a thing. There are very little impact to the first eight hundred thousand dollars to students that was removed by Steve. There's very few, you can't draw a line from the budget reduction to a student losing a service, to a teacher losing a job, to any kind of, other than a little inconvenience of eight hundred thousand dollars. And we're asking, we're all looking, what can we take away from the town side? What could, what about our taxpayers on the town side that are saying, we don't have children in school? We want to use the roads. We want to have these other services and we're taking, Steve is fifty eight thousand dollars over prior year. So I get we might have done the school, we cut it too far. I understand that. We also haven't gotten the support from the Board of Education on, gee, here, we can help out. We want to sit at the table. They refused to sit at the table with Steve. They didn't go to the table at all and they've held firm on, they've made cuts, their conscious cuts have been out of a, a lunchroom fund that we has been mismanaged for years. That's a cut. The money's been there. We should have been utilizing this money. I think when we talk concessions and we're pointing the finger at Steve, I think we need concessions from the Board of Ed. As of before this budget that we just proposed, they did not have one of their goals from the superintendent's presentation not met. They didn't have one of their priorities not met. We took the risk of special ed on the town side and said, if you have an overrun, we'll cover it from the town side. So I mean, again, I, I think these, when we speak concessions, we're looking at Steve. Also, I don't like the idea personally of getting back to bonding, that when we're getting out of bonding small items, we're going backwards. I think any legs has to be expenditures. You know, we can't bank on revenues coming back. And again, my opinion only. It's expenditures. Expenditures are gonna drive the stability of us going forward. If we do get more revenue, again, I, I like Martian Steve's approach. We add it back in. We, we, we able to fund through different ways. And, and I will say, we, we probably need to add back into the Board of Ed budget as of today. We probably need to add something back in. But I mean, we've asked concessions from Steve, looking at roads, looking at this. The Board of Ed has not come to us with any concessions. Their position has been very clear. We're gonna ask for everything. And it's our job to protect the students. It's admirable. I respect it. However, concessions, we're in a crisis. We need concessions from all sides. They hold two thirds of our budget. They are the biggest stakeholder in our budget and we really, there has been zero reductions as of yet. Again, they've been accounting moves. Fifty two thousand from the Student Activity Fund doesn't affect anything. A lot of their things has not had a direct effect, nor do we want to hurt any children. But there is room, other towns are doing better management moves and looking at different areas. So I think we gotta be careful. I mean, it's a majority board. And again, Steve can't take any more hits. We can't, it, 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 you know, we, we're talking about being creative. We're talking about manipulating. These are all things that catch up with you at some point down the road. At some point, there's a trap when you start to manipulate and push things too much, in my opinion. So how, well, how do we go forward? How do we vote on a budget right now to present to the town? And again, I'll reiterate, we can't bank on a million dollar contingency. I mean, I think Ricky, we're already, we gave him ninety one thousand we talked about last week, so we're already at nine hundred thousand. And are they gonna come in on that number? So I'm looking for answers now how to go forward. We all put something out. How do we, how do we bring this back to the center? So Mark, you were first on the list. Bring us back to the center.
You know, we, we can sit here for another three nights in a row and, and go spin our heads and spin our wheels on this and you need time to get a presentation going. My, what I would like to put before a vote of the board, because I think we, I, I think we should try to put a vote. Let's see, let's see where we all are. So if you're asking me to be the one to talk first, the, the budget I would vote on is Steve's budget is the increase. We take the, the five hundred thousand dollars out of contingency, four hundred of that goes to the school, one hundred of that goes to the town. I would. Out of the general fund, thank you. The contingency is the five hundred thousand that the Steve has already dedicated and whatever addition the schools have after this, figuring out the closures for this year adds on to that contingency. That's what I think we should, I would call that to a vote.
Before we call it to a vote, I like to hear other opinions. I gotta, I gotta hear other opinions. Dan, you're next on the list.
Somebody say something better. Can you come back to me? I'm working on a new decision tree.
I have no more time for a decision tree, Dan.
Decision tree for the, for the rest of the, of, of, for the next half hour.
Ricky, bring us to the center.
Though I really do like the idea of getting, giving a hundred back to the town and a hundred back to the schools. I just don't really love the option of taking it from the general fund. I'm, I'm really torn on that. I'd like to hear what people's thoughts are on my proposal that takes two hundred and seven thousand, I believe it was away from the cash line and bonds that and removing of another two hundred and sixty one K out of bonding for the baseball fields because they can't get it to it anyway, based on the emails that Marcia and I received to help reallocate that amount. And then kind of come back to the general fund discussion because now numbers are starting to shift a bit and it may change opinions and decisions. I don't know.
Can I talk, you want a discussion on that Ricky? Can I discuss that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I respect your opinion. I appreciate that. And I, and I actually am in favor of taking the money out for doing the fields because can't do them. I am not in favor of changing our policy of trying to not bond the small things. That bites us in the ass in the long run. We know it. And it's not a good procedure to have. So I don't want to rebond any other things that we were not bonding before.
That's fair, but we have four hundred and nine thousand or four hundred thousand, four hundred and one thousand of reallocation for prior bond closeouts. Right now, it's earmarked as paving. We have a total of extra two hundred thousand being bonded of paving. I mean, can, can we? You know, I, I, I don't know. I feel like it's just a matter of semantics of taking these, putting them in the bond. You could still pay theoretically pay it down with half of that leftover bonding that's current. So we're not actually bonding these fleet vehicles. But we would just have to on more on the paving side instead, which yes, we still have that pay down agreement, but we are still partially bonding. I mean, I don't know. I, I, again, it's, it is a way to get two hundred and seven thousand dollars down on the cash side.
So I was on the Board of Finance when we had to fix this bonding of the road issue. There was a year when, when all of the road repair went into bonding and it stayed that way for a little, little while. And we bond roads for twenty years and they last ten years. If you do, if you continue, if we continue to bond roads, we continue to put ourselves in a never ending death spiral of debt. You cannot bond roads. So we dedicated a hundred thousand dollars extra every year. Steve's been very good. Previous Board of Finance has been great at keeping that level. If you go back on it, you are defeating the whole purpose and we are going in a downward depth spiral just on roads.
Even on a crisis? I mean, this is one of those hard things where you say.
General fund. The term of a general fund is a rainy day fund.
Yeah, but do you really want to dip into a rainy day fund when we're trying to bond sixty eight million dollars? After the bond, I don't give a I don't care what we do with the general fund.
I have, I have a question. It's, it's, it's a newbie question. Ricky, it falls in line with kind of what you guys are talking about. And then something circling back to what Dan said, the, the two sixty one on this, I see it's a ten year, it's a source of funding, ten year. But I know it's cap, it's cash. Is that where, Dan, we could maybe just take that out of the budget this year and like you were saying, Mark, you, use it as cash. Can we kick it, kick that can down to next year without, what would the adverse effects be on that?
Yeah, so that, so, so if we just took, took it out and didn't do anything else, it would reduce the, the ten years, that, that's a borrowing amount. So it wouldn't reduce, it wouldn't create additional cash to be used for this year's budget. That would just reduce our borrowing, which isn't a bad thing. But it's not, it's not the objective that we're looking at. So that's.
Okay, sorry.
That's all, that's fine, that's fine. So Ricky, Ricky's thought is to, is to, is to push that out a year and take other things that would otherwise have been cash and put it into the, the borrowing.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
That's all right.
Steve, you're not muted. You're unmute.
You're up.
The other thing that we can do and we're talking about ten years that we could do over five years.
Right, it doesn't have to be ten year financing. It could be five year financing. I mean, that makes.
Yeah. I, 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 I understand Mark's point and I understand Rick's point and there's a lot of merit to both of them. If I had my druthers, as I think Dan said, you know, I think Dan said, let's push our ten year plan down a, a year. I would prefer to do a little more bonding on the roads to free up that cash to lower this year's total burden to our residents. And then we would build, just take a step back and build further. Borrowing for police cars, I, I'm not comfortable with that. I, I agree with Mark on that. You, you do a five year loan, we would really have to do a three year. You know, and if we borrow a hundred, I think it's a hundred and fifty eight, I don't have the number, a hundred and fifty eight thousand, you're paying fifty eight thousand, sixty thousand a year. That seems to me a Band-Aid kind of approach. If we wanted to level set and go back and say, okay, we're not going to do this project, we're gonna push this one off a year. We're gonna take our road paving because of the emergency and take a hundred thousand out of that, go back to bonding. I'd be more comfortable with that personally.
Eileen?
I'm, I'm more in line with the reducing, reducing the capital, like what Steve just said and moving some more of the paving back into bonding. I mean, we, we know that, we know, I think we all have the same goal in mind of getting that out of bonding, but for, you know, the situation that we're in, I, I'd rather, I'd rather hold off on the general fund until we know what's gonna, you know, till we know what, it's what type of outlook we have on the finances. And we won't know that right now while we're making this decision, but you know, to, to back up and gain some cash from a capital project, to me makes more sense, you know, given the situation.
Can I, can I add one more thing there? We could approve a certain amount of borrowing for the roads, but then if the revenues do rebound, our borrowing is always up to a certain amount. So if we really saw great revenues next year, more than our budget is forecasting, hey, we just won't borrow it. We'll pay cash and make a decision in the spring.
That sounds great, but if we have extra revenue, we all know it's going to the school. We all know schools are gonna be hurting. We have extra revenue. I don't think there's a person on here that's, I don't even know that I, I don't even think I would suggest, hey, let's put that hundred thousand to the road when the schools could use it. It, it sounds great, but I don't think it's gonna happen.
Yep, we're all guessing.
Yeah, can I, can I make a proposal on how to proceed, Glenn?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So taking my operations process hat, so I think the first thing we need to decide is, do we all agree as a board that one point seven six is the number we want to go, we want to go forward to the public hearing. And then beneath that, I see four variables in order to, that, that, that remain open topics of discussion. And if, if we know we're gonna get to one point seven six, the question is on the cap, then, then we say, then we go to each one. The capital side, are we gonna move the baseball field and, and move things into, into other things into bonding or, or not? What, what is the size of the contingency and how is that gonna be used? Are we gonna dip into the general fund? And then, and then the last thing is if when we, when we get the final, not the final, but the, the up to date education number, how are we gonna use, utilize that? All with the, the mindset of getting to the number that we agree on at the front end, which is, I think is the one point seven six. Does that make sense? As, as kind of a way to get to a conclusion by the end of tonight?
Yeah, it, it definitely does to me.
Glenn, are you okay with that?
I'm thinking through it, but go ahead, move on ahead of me. Go ahead. I'll take my five minutes now.
Okay. So I guess, so again, so the, the first, the first, I guess, straw poll vote would be, do we agree that one point seven six is the, is the bottom line mill rate number to go into the public hearing? Would be the first straw poll. Then we go through the, the open items as, as to do we change the presentation that Marcia and Steve put together on the budget? Do we move numbers around in these various categories to continue to achieve that one point seven six either by taking money from one place and adding it back to the schools of the town or do we not? And then those, again, those four are what I identified. The, the bonding, the contingency, the general fund and the education surplus.
All right, I took my five minutes.
Okay.
I'm not hung on the one point seven six number personally. I can move that up to two. You know, I can move that number. Again, I'm gonna circle back is I think the answer to this whole thing is expenditures.
Yep.
I mean, all the other dancing we're doing around it, it still circles around expend, in my opinion, again, expenditures. What are we gonna carry on the expenditure line? We can all come up with creative schemes on how to bond different money, roads and take five hundred thousand from the general fund, but we're still on the expenditure line. And I'm okay with moving the percentage up on the tax increase a little bit instead of trying to manipulate the general fund or manipulate bonding or manipulate any other sources of revenue that's gonna put Steve in a jam down the road and play catch up. You know, I'd almost rather bite a bullet on the front end. If you guys in this board decide we need to increase some expenditures, I'd almost take the bullet on the front side a little bit and try to control expenditure. Take the bullet on the front side a little bit and try to control expenditures. As well as increase. So, I think once we start to get too creative, it's going to create a. You know, like Ricky's bonding idea, I like it, but it goes against the strategy we set forward. You know, take it from the general fund is something that some of us agree, some of us don't agree. So as we're trying to get creative, which is appreciated, and actually, you know, I love the out of the box thinking. Is it just easier to look at, what are we looking to increase and what is that actual increase to the taxpayers? Am I wrong or go ahead?
Oh, okay, all right, but there's, so I. So, and so instead of going top down, it's more bottoms up. And what number do we think is appropriate on, on each piece? And there is still, there's still variables to be, to be. So even if we came up with, with, you know, two percent, uh, we still don't know what the. Education surplus is going to be. And I think in order to give you, I think we should decide how that's going to be applied. No, regardless of how much it is. I mean. Is that just automatically going to go into contingency and, and that would alleviate some of the? Increase? What's a thought? I don't know.
All right, again. My problem is, and Steve, please pipe in, is we're missing the third piece of this puzzle.
Yep.
And, and we've asked for the third piece of this puzzle numerous times. We don't know what the number is. We keep getting told it's catastrophic, it's catastrophic, it's catastrophic. It was catastrophic in January. When the Board of Ed reduced it forty seven thousand dollars and we're going to lose staff and Harry made a mention that we've never cut staff. We found eight hundred thousand, eight hundred eighty eight thousand dollars worth of accounting moves. Uh, where are we catastrophic? Are we at the catastrophic point now? Is that catastrophic point four hundred thousand dollars in? Is the catastrophic point eight hundred thousand dollars in? We've been asking these questions of people to come to the table. And we're not getting the people to come to the table. Other than we're not going to give you any more money. We're not going to make those hard decisions. So I, I don't know where to go. What is a number? I mean, do we agree to go to, to? Two percent? And that's the number, and then we work in the variables. I mean, what are your thoughts?
Can I add one more, uh, item to this conversation? You know, in reviewing the Board of Ed's budget, and obviously we don't tell them how to spend their money or what to do. This year, they're adding by our accounting, and we looked at it pretty carefully. They're adding nine people. Some of them administrators. Maybe this is a year like with the library, we say, hey. You know, can you do with four people this year or five people this year and add two next year or add all four next year when we know where we're in a better place? Four people would probably be at least five to six hundred thousand dollars. With benefits and everything. I, we don't know. Glenn's point, we don't know because we're not getting as much information as we'd like. To make these decisions that you have to make.
So what's the answer, team? I mean, seriously, what's the answer? Let's make a decision tonight. I mean. Like Steve said, we suggested last meeting that Steve, Marcia. John, Ken, and Rosa go to a room and have these discussions and we got shut. So where do we go now? We have the tools and the contingency fund. We don't know what that's going to be. To, to manipulate, not manipulate, to help support the process. We've, uh, everyone has gone to concessions on the town side. Everyone has said roads, bonding town side. We're not getting the inputs, so where is the answer on our side? Where is it? Because again, Dan, I appreciate your approach, but are we just working to a, a, a number that doesn't quite? Fit? I don't know. I, 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 I don't know if one point seven eight, and like I said, I'm scared of. We're driving off of one seven eight, we're, we're touching general fund, we're talking about getting away from our bonding strategy. We're doing different manipulations that, you know, we're talking about kicking the can a little bit down the road. We have a school ahead of us. The state hasn't even approved our extra funding yet. They've approved it to a point, but we haven't got the final thing saying they're going to give us the eighteen million dollars yet. We'll get it probably, but when are we going to get it? So there's so many. Things down the road ahead of us already. How much stuff can we pile up down the road?
Yep, all right, so, um. What dollar, and, and so now we're talking percentages, so what would, if, if we. Again, hypothetically, if, if, if that one point seven six changed to two, what would the dollar amount be?
Two hundred thousand.
How much?
Uh, around two hundred thousand.
Hardly moves the needle, I'm mute.
I was just about to say that doesn't. What, what does that, what do you get for that, you know?
I have no idea.
I know, I know, I know.
No idea.
And. I'll just add something, and I happened to discuss this with Steve before, so I'm feeling a little nervous adding it. Um. I think that on the town side, we'd like to continue to put our money where our mouth is and. Go with the iterative process, don't add a hundred thousand back to us. We will come to you if we need it, but we kind of believe in that process.
Well, we can't run half the town on one process and half the town on the other.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, Glenn, but I agree with Marcia. You know, we know our numbers inside and out. Adding a hundred thousand would help us. There are things we could do. But in this crisis, I'd rather stay where the town is.
I take back my offer of a hundred grand to the town.
Do you agree with me?
Sorry, Mark, I couldn't help it. I'm a terrible person.
I love it.
That was a good one.
I, 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 I'll, I'm going to say it and you guys are all going to crucify me and I'm okay with that right now.
There we go.
Yeah, here it goes. It, it's, it's time. If we had the cooperation of everybody that they have it right now, we would be in a much better position. I, I, we're chasing this freaking thing and I'm at a point of, I don't even know where to turn anymore. Steve just said he could deal with the town. He's a fifty eight thousand dollars over prior year. We said we could help about by give back and he's saying he wants to work to a process. We got two thirds of a shareholder not involved.
Glenn. I don't know the process for doing it in a special meeting, but we may or may not have the, the Chairman of the Board Ed on this meeting that might. Speak and maybe has some insight from in, in the last week.
I'm pretty sure they have a meeting going on right now, actually.
Going on right now.
They are on, you do have the right to invite people in to have a conversation as long as you stay on the.
We're, we're so far into this though, Mark, right now that, my God, we have.
I didn't know if their meeting was the same time or if it was earlier.
No, I think it was the same time.
My suggestion is, guys, you have to pick a number, and if the Board of Ed comes back with different numbers that you can use and apply to the budget. Then you have another meeting on Monday and add those numbers in, but right now. We're, we're going back and forth here. Glenn is absolutely right. We don't know what the Board of Ed. Numbers are. And so. They put you in a position, you have to pick a number.
How hard would it to pre-do the presentation, Glenn? With whatever we decide and then if they come back with a number, can we just edit that portion? Mark, you're shaking your head, so you probably know the answer to that.
It could be simple like that, but they could have information that changes our entire thought process.
Possible.
And that's not fair to Glenn to give him. You know.
If they take, if they take any more than the ninety one thousand. That they, that they said that they were going to take. It becomes a decrease of their need anyway. It, it, again, nothing goes back to the town on any of that, but it does become a decrease on the need and it just reduces. What they need and it also reduces the amount going to contingency. The problem is, is the. Four ninety number or the four ninety one number that they originally came up with totally accurate, does that change? So as long as that number kind of keeps in line. Then we're in a good spot, but to, to be able to at least. Make assumptions. You know, and then.
Yeah, Ricky, I agree with you. We can crunch numbers for you very, very quickly. So if the Board of Ed came back Monday afternoon and said, okay, here's our numbers, we can get them to you. I, I, I agree with you, Mark. I know that's not the best way to go, but we have the capability on our side to crunch these numbers. About any changes in the budget that you want.
Right, but from, from, just from a simple rate perspective, we can, we could say, okay, maybe they won't take out. Ninety one thousand, let's call it two hundred thousand. So rather than the five hundred thousand going into contingency or the four ninety one going into contingency. It's really going to be two ninety one going into contingency, but the Board of Ed is going to need two hundred thousand less. So. There's a comfort factor in, yes, it's not going in one direction, but it's not going into the contingency. To help raise our expenses, but it is going to decrease the overall need on the school side. So I mean, I feel like. It's kind of a one for one still there. What, again, whether or not the four ninety one is. A good number is really, you know. As long as it's not materially different, then I think we can come up with something pretty good.
I've got a, I've got to speak up here. I, I, I keep trying to bite my tongue when it comes to Board of Ed stuff. If we pass something tonight with whatever cut, whether it's Steve's cuts or more or less or whatever. The history of the Board of Ed is not, not this Board of Ed, some people that are still on it. But past Board of Eds, the first response is we're going to lose teachers, we're going to lose services to the students. And it's going to scare all of us to try to change and scramble and do everything and. Not once in any of those years when the Board of Finances cut their budget, did they cut services to the students. Um, this is, there's a big cut this year, I get it. But if we set something tonight, we can't, to set something tonight, but. Not really set it because we're still going to wait for more information, that doesn't make any sense. So we either set it tonight or we don't. I'm not setting it tonight. And then hearing a bunch of complaints and then setting it again on Monday. That, that's not how you, that's not how you set a budget.
Is it easier to, to move the public hearing to Thursday, the fourteenth? Does that make it easier on Glenn? Oh, you can't. Okay, thank you.
I would not change the pub. I don't know if you could this close out. I think you needed fourteen days' notice anyways, but we are the fight, we are the financial. Division of this town. We are the only ones voting on this this year. We have, I know, we all take it seriously and I think we're having way more meetings than any other town on this, but if we set a budget, that's our budget. After the town meeting, we take that back into consideration. I'm not setting a budget to set another budget. That, that, that doesn't make any sense.
Let, let's simplify this. Let's simplify this. We've all thrown around numbers tonight. We've all done it. The Board of Ed right now in the current budget has to lose one million sixty six thousand dollars.
On top of the eight seventeen that they've already cut out.
That, that, but Eileen, they didn't cut it. Again, let, let's, let's be clear. That was two hundred thousand dollars in insurance premium. That was an actual, an estimate to an actual. We keep using these words, the Board of Ed cut out eight hundred thousand. We took out a three hundred thousand dollar contingency, took the risk on the town side, not a cut. We took out two hundred thousand from an S to an actual. So, we haven't really cut anything. So let, let's go from the budget process now. Right now, the Board of Ed is looking at a million sixty six cut, because this is the first cut really in reality. If I take it from the lunch fund, not taking it from the student activity funds, all these side accounts. So this is the first cut, one oh six six. Right? What are you guys looking at as a number? That is realistic. We talked about two hundred thousand, we've talked about three hundred thousand, we've talked about four hundred thousand. What is the number? If we say four hundred thousand is the number, we say the contingency that, that we're, we're going to scoop and put it on our million dollar contingency side. They keep it on their side as a reduction to the budget. So in other words, we'll, we'll use that four hundred thousand as a direct. Uh, they could take it right into their budget and use it.
All from Steve's side. Is that correct?
The half a million that's in there now is all from Steve's side.
Right, so our entire contingency for next year would be the half a million that came from Steve's side. I'm just trying to wrap my mind around this, make sure I'm understanding.
Yes. Remembering that, remembering that we all, that we accepted the risk on the, on the teacher salary line. We already accepted that.
We've accepted a lot of risk.
I know. That means that they don't move items in their budget. When they hit their salary, when they hit their salaries, then we're coming in and pulling from the contingency. When they hit their special ed.
Special ed difference, salary, the salary line, I feel like if they don't hit their salary.
We have the special ed, yes.
Right, that's right. We have the special ed, you're right.
They have forty students come in, they budgeted for thirty two, we all agreed. They can't budget for that, we have to accept. Steve, am I, you, please stand behind me here.
Yep, I agree.
We accepted that on our side, saying you can't budget for that, but if we happen, we're going to pay for the children. We all, we are paying for our children. We're not missing the obligation of that. So we assume the risk, so.
And, and the additional COVID costs are assumed on our side.
Right, we've assumed that on our side.
So that's what I'm saying, if we're not taking any contingency money from them, we're only taking, I, I, I don't, I.
Well, what if we, no, that's not right either, because then we can't set a proper mill rate without knowing what they have. That's the problem. I mean, personally, I'd like to, here's, here's my proposal. I'd say add two hundred back in and then whatever they realize in savings. That's theirs.
So you're going to give them six hundred thousand?
If they realize six, if they realize that much, then I would say yes, but if they don't, I mean, we, get, hey, we could. We could shift it around. I don't know, I'm just throwing something out there. No one's going anywhere else with it.
Thousand, how did you get to the two hundred thousand on the front side?
If you wanted, you, you, you brought up bumping it up to two percent.
Yeah, but not taking it from all sides. If we're going to, you can't take the best proposals out of everybody.
I'm throw, I'm, I'm throwing, I'm throwing it out there and we can start, you know, having our discussions and negotiations.
I'm not even in favor of giving them all of the, the four ninety theoretical savings back. We need some of that. In our contingency. So if somebody wanted to say. We're looking at four ninety and you wanted to put, uh, two ninety, give them back and two hundred, we put into our contingency. So our contingency becomes seven hundred and they get two ninety back? I could buy into that. I'm almost agreeing with you, Ricky.
Kind of, so two, two hundred. Outright in, to wait, hold on, let me, two hundred outright into their budget and then with their savings. Oh, you're cutting that part out?
Yes.
Then we're not agreeing at all.
He cut you in half, Ricky.
Some of the other towns, when I was on the phone with, uh, their chairmen, they said, a lot of them were taking the surpluses. As soon as they know whatever the surplus is. And they're basically holding it and then we'll release it quarterly or on an as needed basis. So maybe that is the, you know, you assume that. And then you release it as you need it. That seemed to be a, a, a couple of them had all agreed on that and everybody had made cuts.
Well, then that's just holding, then that's just holding ev- everything in contingency.
Right.
And that's what we would need for the iterative process.
Right, and they just would, they said every, a couple of the boards I talked to, they said. Every month they would just bring it up and look at the financials and figure out what needed to be released and what didn't. It was, you know, a very open minded, opened ended process. And they could quarterly, monthly, because nobody really knows where this is going. But they know there's a surplus, they just don't know how much. It did make, um, in a couple of the towns, the Board of Ed feel a little bit better about the cut, knowing that. There was a surplus coming back.
I think the Board of Ed's issue with that.
I know, Dan's like.
I think the issue, yeah, the issue with that was, is the Board of Ed's lack of confidence. Because of potentially past history with past Board of Finances. Maybe not making good on their word. Um, I know we've made strides in the last couple of months for better relationships with the Board of Ed. And, you know, I hope that going forward, we can only improve on our communications and our understanding of each other's needs. But as it stands right now, I believe that they are very cautious of. The Board of Finance holding on to a very large sum of money that they know that they are probably going to need, especially when it comes to. You know. The fact that they're, you know, asking for X and, and, and we're denying them a certain amount. But yet, we're. But yet we're holding it in contingency for when they need to it. You know, the, the perception, the perception. You know, a- again, and, and it really depends on which side you wanna look at it, because ob- obviously. I'm in favor of that because I trust us as a board to be able to give back to. The Board of Ed and to the schools as needed. Um, you know. However. There still is kind of a lack of confidence. There, I'm, I'm sure there's an opinion and an assumption there that. Well, they're still gonna have to make a ton of concessions before they're even allowed to come to the table and say, okay. We, we really, you know, have nine hundred thousand of it, you know, or let's call it three hundred thousand of additional special ed costs. And then they're probably still gonna expect us to go, okay. Find as much as you can in your current budget now and then come back to us, even though we're holding nine hundred thousand dollars of contingency. You know, so it, it, it really is a tough. Tough sell to say, let's just hoard everything in contingency.
I don't know, I mean, speaking.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I, I don't know. I think if we made it so bare bones, as it's so. You know, as we're all talking about the cut right now and it's just, there's just so little wiggle room. I don't know how we would go and say, go back and look for more. It may just be, you know, and all this is okay. And, you know, all these, because before, when we've asked poignant questions. The answers have not always been. What they could have been. And then all of a sudden, there is this, oh, and so. I don't necessarily know if we'd say, oh, go find more savings. I just, it, would it be, have you checked these, these following accounts where things had been in the past? But.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you on that.
That's just my feeling and being on the board for the little time that I'm.
I, I, I'm sorry, are you done, Brianna?
I am done, Mark.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ricky. You find me one instance where a Board of Finance unanimously. Agreed upon something that they would give to the Board of Ed and did not follow through. Find me one, one instance that that ever.
In, in my history of being on the board, it's never happened. I know, no, no, hey, I'm with you. I agree.
Say there's distrust to a Board of Finance, a Board of Finance, in my knowledge and I've. Many years dealt with this and looked into it in years past, have never once heard of a Board of Finance unanimously agreeing to do something for the Board of Ed and not following through. So even let people have that thought. Is unconscionable to me.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to.
You said.
Implant, I'm not trying, I said it, but I'm not trying to implant thoughts. I'm trying to give you other people's perceptions are.
If someone hears a member of the Board of Finance say that the Board of Education has a reason to not trust a Board of Finance, when the Board of Finance is not once ever.
I never said they have a, a, a reason to. I said they have a perception of distrust. There's a big difference. Words matter. Words matter. Stop that. Words matter.
We're getting off track here.
You both are, got good points, but let's. Let's keep it here, okay? Let's keep it here. I think both of you are right in, in this thing. We've never gone down. I, I, I do think in the past. There, there's been some problems, but let's move forward from this. We gotta pass a budget. We gotta come up with a decision tonight. We're missing so many pieces, but then we go back to, are we gonna get the answers to the pieces we're missing? I mean, we're sitting here. Are we at, again, the catastrophic point? Or is there room for better management, creative thinking on all sides? Uh, I don't wanna get into, again, like I say, the manipulations and the, the, the kicking the cans and everything. So do we set the budget at one point seven eight? As it stands right now, we present it to the town as a hearing, as it stands. When we get the, the Board of Ed number, which again, if we get it in the next two weeks, is it the real number, not the real number? We're never gonna know, but we'll have a better estimate on this. And we look at the size of that. If the size of it is five hundred thousand dollars. Is that enough? In a combination to give back to the Board of Ed, they're not gonna. They, they've made a, a very clear statement is they're not gonna say, hey, we can get rid of this program or hey. We can look at hiring teachers at less money. We're, they're not offering any. Uh, foresight into the process, other than we can't afford any more dollars being cut. We need to decide financially, not on programs being cut, not on what we wanna see him do. Financially, what can we afford as a town? That will not put us in the, a bad position down the road when we're financing all that money. Not to put us in five percent increases for the next four years. Cause also when it goes back to vote, we gotta realize if we're putting up a six percent per vote next year. And all the things that we put in place and all the, the programs the Board of Ed puts into place, next year when it goes to a real vote. And the people say, we don't wanna pay six percent, we go through three votes, it gets turned down to three percent. What are they gonna do? Are they gonna cut the five positions they just hired and we paid money to go forward, but we're gonna take ten steps backwards? We got, we're losing sight of every percentage we add to next year. Is a possibility of the vote getting turned down and, and the hard decisions are gonna be worse. We're gonna have staff in place. They're hiring eight new staff positions, like Steve said. Could they go to five? We haven't had that help from them. They haven't come back to us with any kind of foresight on that, other than we need everything. We need everything, we need everything. That's all they keep saying. But when we get to next year and we're looking at seven percent and the voters go. It's down to three, which is more in line with our historical votes. Where is the five percent gonna come from? What's gonna hap, are we gonna spend good money after bad or bad money after good? So we need to decide what is a number we're comfortable going forward as a town on the expenditure line. The creativeness on the general fund and the creativeness on bonding. Isn't fixing our problems, in my opinion. So where do we stand on the expenditure line? Right now, the, the town, you know, the Board of Ed was asking for four point eight seven. In their ask, that's what we're looking at. That's a number that we're saying, do we need to reduce to four point eight seven? Steve's side is asked for one point something, he's down to point three right now and said he can manage. He's telling us, I can manage these things. So where are we gonna fall on a number? Do we fall onto one, seven, eight and say, that's it and we'll look at it again? We look at the contingencies or do you wanna add in now? But if we add in now, the contingencies, we're gonna bring that in a little. So I mean, let, let's look at this process. So. Mark, start us again, cause we gotta get to this.
Nope, I said my piece. I called the vote, no one seconded it. Let's move to someone else's idea. I have no, no support on mine and I haven't changed my mind.
You're still on to five hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund, four hundred thousand goes, or four hundred thousand out of the general fund.
No, you're right. I take a hundred grand back out of Steve's, so I'm.
You took a hundred out of Steve's and you're, you're taking a four hundred other general fund and you're giving it back to the schools.
Yep.
And four hundred now gets us below ten percent.
Yep. With, with, and, and as I detailed before, with a plan that when the revenues, when the tax revenues come back in. They go first to replenishing the general fund. So we have the plan, we took a little out, which is responsible in a time of crisis. And we have a plan to put the money back in, which is re- representable in a time of crisis. And we follow that plan.
What's your plan then? What, where, where are you gaining this revenue that you can bank on it?
We are seven hundred thousand dollars off of revenue this year. As Stephen Marcia detailed, we are ninety-nine point nine percent of collections. In pre, in subsequent years. So in three years, two to three years, that catches, I already detailed this. In two to three years, that catches up. So in two to three years, that extra seven hundred thousand dollars comes in. And we take the first four hundred thousand of that and we put it back into the general fund is the plan. And if, and as I said before also. If money, if we realize other revenue before that, that's not used. We put it into the replenishing the general fund before we get the tax revenue. It's a, in my mind, it's a responsible plan. And, and it funds the schools additionally and it doesn't hamper Steve any further than he already is.
All right, Dan, circle back, cause we're gonna come to a solution here. We got Mark's suggestion.
One point seven six. Steve's budget. And. When the. Board of Ed surplus gets. Estimated later this week, hopeful, I mean, I, they're gonna. Have a number today after their meeting, I think, aren't they? At least a, a more up to date one.
On their savings, no, their savings are holding firm.
No, on the sur, on the surplus, on the surplus.
Yeah, their surplus i- is that cha, they haven't had another monthly budget thing, so I, and what I was told today is. That number is still the number that they think it's gonna be, but they haven't also closed out their month yet. They haven't had their monthly review, so we don't know. So go ahead, I mean.
One point seven six and, and I, I don't know if this is my proposal, this is, one point seven six and they, and they keep their surplus and, and, and are able to use it. That's, that's the other way to. Get them some more. A bit more. I don't know.
Ricky, where are you at? Back to your bonding plan or have you changed up?
Uh, the bonding plant, well, I still think we should just get rid of the two sixty-one for the baseball fields. It doesn't look like it. Makes sense to bond now. So, I mean, if you want, just so we can all get in agreement, we can call that to a vote right now.
Good job.
Go ahead, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to remove the two hundred and sixty-one thousand from the, uh, capital. Uh, plan for ten-year financing for the, uh, BHS baseball fields. Can I get a second?
I second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You got it unanimous, Ricky. Go ahead, keep rolling.
Um, uh, I do like the idea still of shifting some bonding, but I, you know, I think that is. Puts us, I, I do agree also that. You know, perhaps we could do without it, so, um, I'm not gonna bring that to the table. Um, I would actually like to. Propose, um, and it's a long shot, uh. Four hundred thousand dollars increase. To go back to the schools and then anything we realize. From their savings goes directly into general fund. And that way we have it set. Whatever, we can set the mill right now off of that. It would be a two point two percent increase.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, for adding four hundred thousand to the school side, uh, expenditures. Bringing the mill rate increase to approximately two point two percent. Can I get a second?
One second.
Discussion.
I think raising the mill rate at a time like this is, 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 even the one point seven six is the far stretch from.
There's. I, I, and I really do like, I do like the, the thought process behind. The general fund. It would just be better if it was a year from now, after we've already bonded for the schools, because yes, somebody. Who's not affiliated with the town, but you know, is. Supposed to be trustworthy, says, yeah, you could do it up to a certain amount, as long as you have a plan to fund. If we don't fund, could that be a longer? Impact down the road. I mean, a twenty-bip change. In that borrowing could be another three and a half million dollar impact over the next twenty years. To me, that this doesn't seem worth it.
To me, the risk of having more and more people default on their taxes and not pay their taxes far outweighs. Uh, the potential for a minimal risk of taking some money out of the general fund.
Right, but to me, the defaults on the taxes would actually justify actually. Pulling money out of the general fund after the fact and more reactive action versus proactive.
We already have seven hundred thousand dollar de- default on the taxes.
Yeah, and we're adding, we're, right now, we're, we're at a five hundred thousand dollar contingency. So that, that on the surface of it would seem ludicrous.
Steve, you're muted.
Who me?
No, Steve's trying to talk and he's muted.
I'm sorry, I thought I was muted. Uh, default is not the word to use here. We will collect those taxes. It's the timing. Right, it makes a big difference.
You're right, you're right. I'm saying you're right. I use, it's late. You're right.
You know, if we, we're looking at right now, John Lucas, Marcia and I, at possibly bonding the full sixty, sixty, whatever million, sixty-three million. Next year. Rates are his historically low. If we. Don't get our AA two rating up to AA one. Right, if we can get it up to AA one and show that we have weathered this storm financially. Uh, the difference will be somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five basis points. On that amount of money, you're talking a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year. Now, the reason we're thinking of borrowing next year is our ten-year plan calls for a borrowing rate of between four and five percent. New Fairfield went out two weeks ago for the first eight million dollars in their schools and they have very similar ratings to us. They paid two point one percent. If we could get that over a four and a half percent, that's about one point three million dollars a year. In interest, we will not pay. That's worth saving and that's worth striving for. And that's why I'm against touching our general fund.
Steve, huge amount of money. Have you heard from anyone whether we're actually gonna be able to borrow sixty-three million dollars before we build the school?
No, we can borrow at any time we want, because we've already got the referendum and the bonding to do that.
You don't even have approval from, from any of the boards.
Yeah, we do. Wetlands. Went to, we went to referendum to approve the borrowing for the.
No, 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 no. You, you don't, from any of the boards or commissions. It has to go to Wetlands first. We haven't even seen it. There's no application. So I know it hasn't gone to zoning. It hasn't gone anywhere.
Yeah.
Not the meeting, not the meeting, not the meeting.
That's not the meeting.
So it will go through. It will go through.
You can't grow money before you do all that, though, is what I'm saying.
Yes, you can.
We're, we're still looking at protecting the, I mean, the bottom line is Steve wants to protect. The possibility of the, the reduction of the general fund due to rates increasing. Mark, I see what you're saying. The, uh. Advisor said we can go below ten percent. So I mean, I, I get all the points, but I mean, the school part of it. We gotta, that's another meeting. That's another whole other meeting.
So what if we, this is Marcia, what if we took Ricky's idea? And just held off on the mill rate for now, because you can set that later. Um, we should have more savings when we projected the half million, we had only cut a hundred thousand of the OPEB. We could cut the full two hundred thousand of the OPEB. That, um, we have some, um, capital projects out there. It's not a lot, but we may have fifty thousand dollars. Um, um, that we could find in projects that are just working through the system now some. I'm thinking specifically of some trucks that we have the base purchase order and if, if we don't need more money. Um, so what if we added four hundred thousand to the school for right now? Added in the mill rate, but still keep gathering this information, cause again, it's changing all the time.
But then why are we adding in four hundred thousand dollars and we're just playing with numbers again?
Cause then, because then we can just set it and forget it and move on and then worry just about the revenue side. I think if we can find a comfort level on.
Forgetting it though, Ricky, are you at four hundred thousand dollars, no more, done, case closed?
If the rest of it, I, I would be okay with it. The rest of it would go into the contingencies or, you know, even. To, to help out the town. I think that I could be comfortable with that.
So then that's it, four hundred thousand, we're done. We don't, this is it, over.
I could change the motion to half a million if you guys are down. I, I mean, we can have that discussion. We could do that now too, but I mean, if, if, if we, if we set that expense, that expense now, I'm, I'm, I would, I would leave that alone.
I'm out there. I'm out there. I, I, I have to come out of from the other direction. And say, if we're pushing the mill rate over two percent, if the, if the, if there's even a chance that I can't get there, I just can't. So I think we have the, that's why, that's why it's, it's stinks that we don't have the, the number, but I think we have to do, I, I, I'm not willing to go above two.
I, I, I think I'm not either right now, Dan, if you wanna know my opinion right now. I mean, we're lacking too much. And it, I know we're down to the twelfth hour here and it's like killing me.
What if you did four hundred thousand to the school, the mill rate? What if you did 400,000 to the school, the mill rate goes up to 2% and the rest comes out of fund balance?
But I'm not, I, I, I'm s- I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm really, my brain is gone. How's that? Uh?
No, 'cause I'm, I'm just more comfortable with everything else going, you know, whatever the schools come back with in savings, that just will hop all into contingency. I mean, we could set, we could set basically the expenditures now and say, this is gonna be our expense. Everything else that's just gonna end up being, you know, a little gravy on top. I know it doesn't really change the mill rate per se, but you could. I mean, if the school side realizes an additional savings of two and a half, uh, 250,000 or 300,000, then we can say, okay, just to get it up below two, let's put 200,000 back into the revenue side and we'll only put 50,000 in contingency. I mean, we can make those decisions after.
Throw the reverse of that. They realize 220,000, 250,000 dollars in savings. They realize, you know what, there was more expenses than we thought. We couldn't get here. Now we're at the 250 line. That's all they're gonna give us back, 250.
Yeah, but, okay, and then that goes to either contingency or you could use it to pay down the mill, whatever you want.
But we still put out 400,000 on the backside, so I mean.
I agree, but you, you have a 550,000 contingency, which I'd be comfortable with, and you'd have a mill rate at two or lower. Or approximately two.
I, I.
Marcia comes back with this additional bonding stuff, if all that stuff plays out, then that's just, you know, added gravy. I don't know, can we call it to a vote? Brianna, you haven't said anything?
I, I'm honestly, I'm just so overwhelmed. I'm just being totally legitimately honest. I'm so, Steve's laughing at me. I'm just so overwhelmed by what everybody is saying. I'm like, literally almost, I'm done, I'm out. I'm, I'm not comfortable, I can tell you I'm not comfortable above two. I, I, I'm really not, and I try to follow what all of you guys are doing, and I'm writing notes as I'm talking and I'm listening, I'm trying to take it all in. And there's a part of me that feels like, is it better to be like, you know, like the, the, the 1.76 at Steve's budget and figure out how we get there and building contingencies. If we need to give it back, we give it here, we give it there. Is it better to really look worst-case scenario? Because honestly, we're there. I'm, I'm really feeling like we're at a worst-case scenario. The schools are closed, nobody's going back, there's still distance learning. You know, the hair salons that I've been talking to that are supposed to reopen on May 20th, the, the government restrictions on them as to what they have to do, some of them don't even wanna open. So we're looking at continuous losses of revenue. And I, I, I just, I'm, I'm really honestly, wholeheartedly torn. You know, I, I, I really am. I, I know I'm not comfortable above two. I, I am comfortable with, I, I know I was fine with Steve's budget and there's a, you know, I like Dan's idea of trying to figure out how to get us there. I, 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 that, I would love to.
It sounds like Marcia thinks we can get there by giving 400 to the schools, and it looks like there's other things in the works that she hasn't quite stated yet, but will come down the pipeline. Marcia, am I overstepping by assuming that?
Ricky.
Marcia's gone.
Poor Marcia speak.
Hold on, I mean, it, it, it sounded like there was some additional pockets we don't know about. That's the only thing I'm saying. There's more there that could possibly pay down that mill.
I, I think so, 'cause the last time we talked about taking half of OPEB and what if we took all of OPEB?
Two hundred, there's two, the whole 200's in OPEB. There's zero, the, the new COVID budget has zero in OPEB for.
But for this, for this fiscal year, to increase the surplus in this fiscal year.
So you're taking 300,000 now?
So if we took, so when we talked about the surplus before, um, for year end 20, I think we had talked, and then I, to be honest, I lose track of where we were and when, but I think that we had talked about taking 100,000 out of OPEB for the 20-year. Um, what if we took the 200,000, um, out of the 20-year, um, that would give us another 100,000. So I think that we do, you know, and, and again, it's changing every week. It, um, it would still be fund balance, um, in a way, just as if, if you know, any of these things that are savings for this year are technically, um, using fund balance, um. But we could have some additional savings.
Let's do that now. Why wait? Let's do that now. If we're gonna do it, let's do it.
Oh, whoa, 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 hold the phone here, hold the phone. I gotta go back to, do you hear the process that we're doing right now? We are saying, gee, the town side, we've hammered down to 0.31%, what can you do for us, Marcia? What concessions can be made? What could be done? And by the way, Board of Ed, you could do whatever you wanna do. We're not getting concessions. You see how this process is working, Ricky? Do you see how you said, Marcia, she thinks she could work with us. Marcia feels she can help us out here. Marcia feels, and yet we, we sit here and we're hemming and hawing about, well, the Board of Ed, we gotta try to refund them.
Again, again, I'm, I'm trying to see if even some of that can come down, it can bring down the mill. And then whatever is left over, all of that can sit in contingency, could be used for town side, could be used for school side, whatever. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to hit, uh, I'm trying to hit a mark for the expense so that we can at least have that side done with and move forward and then just focus on um, refining the savings and the revenues and those pieces.
But we're working on one-third of the budget compared to two-thirds of the budget, a- and we're squeezing down one-third all the way around. All the way around. We're squeezing out OPEB on Steve's side, we're squeezing out all these things, and yet again, we're looking at how do we fund back to the school? And we're squeezing down again. I mean, it's like.
Hold on, we had, we had 100, we had 100,000 on the table at some point for back to the towns and Steve said no. I, I'm, I'm sorry for not bringing up more to, to, to bring back to the town. I mean, if it's there beyond the 400,000, I, I, I'm all for it.
And what's there on the school side, Ricky? What's there on the school side?
Well, that's the problem. We don't know yet. But I still think that, I still think that they should be funded to a certain degree. And then whatever savings they realize, let that all come back onto the town, hit the town contingency. We use it as needed. We, we won't look about, you know, it, it won't be a divvy-up factor anymore. And if there's, you know, let's say it's 250 or that comes back in school savings, if you guys wanna say, okay, let's give 50,000 back to town, I'm okay with that too. But that doesn't increase mill. I'm talking about some, an impact to the mill right now would be adding 400,000 in these expenses to the schools. The finagling, the finagling to move the mill up or down, you know, that could, that could take place, uh, you know, or just to shift, you know, expense here, you know, just to keep the mill flat or to decrease it, you know, I mean, there's more to come that we just don't know, but I feel like we'll get there.
All right, so, so I have a different approach, but, but, uh, I think we can straw poll to see if people wanna do what Ricky said and see, see if that has legs or not. I mean, do you wanna, do you wanna do a straw poll there, Glenn, and then if that, if that's.
Motion's on the table, right? I mean, you can't do anything, change it right now. Mark, what can we do? You know it better than I know.
Steve, you're still muted. I read your lips on that one.
Sorry, guys. Um, if, if the school save 500,000 dollars this year and we give it to them next year, that's a one and a quarter percent increase in their budget. So they go from 2.34 to 4-point something. Right? So almost to the 5% they were originally asking for. That we, well, no, I'm sorry, that we had set the budget for.
Right.
Something to think about.
Right. I, I am much more comfortable, you know, it, I, we know my thought of taking money out of the contingency. We don't have to take the full 400 out, we can take 200 out, which would leave us above the 10% and allow them to take the first 200 of their savings and apply it directly to their budget. And that gets them the 400,000 dollars. It takes a little bit out of contingency, but leaves us over the 10%. It leaves the mill rate the same at the 1.78 or whatever.
No, it'll bring it up to two.
No, it wouldn't.
That's taking out the general fund again.
I'm taking 200 grand out of the general fund. They get their first 200,000 in savings.
Oh, okay.
Not opening schools. Yes, Celine, I am taking from the general fund, but I'm leaving it over 10%. It's about 10.1, almost 10.1% at that point. I'm just trying to explore all avenues, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to come up with a creative way to give the schools more money. I was trying to offer Steve more money and I appreciate, you know, your candor in tightening your belt as much as you possibly can, and I, I commend you for that.
I think I'm, just we have to be careful, that fund balance again, on the 10%, let's, let's keep watching that as we go along, 'cause we've got that revenue pulling it down too. Um.
All right. Ricky, before we vote, do you consider rescinding your motion?
The problem is, well, just to keep the discussion going, it sounds like 400,000 seems like a comfortable number. It just, and, and that's what my motion is. Could we be set on 400,000 going back to schools? And then deciding on the avenues in which we get, how, how we fund that.
Here's, here's your avenues. You ready? We have 177 in their non-lapsing fund going forward, sitting in the general fund.
So you're saying?
We have 177 in a non-lapsing fund in the general fund, which is there, so it's an assigned general fund. So you could utilize that.
So we could use, so we could use, out of the 400K, we could put 177 of that towards it.
Which is, which is the same as using fund balance.
Right.
Right, but because it's coming from this quote, "non-lapsing fund," the optics are, I'm, I'm assuming are much different.
I'm not sure about that, but it would be good, we could, somebody could check, but not tonight.
Well, I'm asking Marcia, I guess, on that.
It wouldn't be different because, because we've never allocated it, we've never approved it, it's in the, on the signed fund balance.
But it is the quote-unquote "non-lapsing fund" money, which was the schools to start with. So I'm, I would actually be 100% okay with that allocation.
So now you're talking, you need 223,000 dollars to get to your next level. And also you are in agreement, this is it, 400,000, we're done. We're closing the case unless, unless something comes out of the woodwork that we, we can't, 400,000 is the number.
I agree with that. So I'm just checking, 200, 223% increase, 23,000, um, dollar increase is 2.08%. So with.
So now.
Could we, could we, could we just for now, on the surface of it, reallocate from contingency to pay that down, and then everything else goes back into contingency for the savings? So that we can get it to two.
What if we took?
Not general fund contingent, like actual town contingency side.
What if?
Knowing that they're gonna realize more than that. Sorry. Sorry, Glenn, you were talking?
Yeah, I'm thinking about the OPEB now. Could we use the OPEB to get us to that, and if we have a surplus, we pay back the OPEB. So now we take the 177 to 200 from OPEB, you're at 377. And, and we figure out 13,000 friggin' dollars, call it 400,000 and call it a night.
And it's, and that, that would keep it at 1.76, right?
No, it would get it to.
No, it wouldn't, 'cause we're not increasing, right? We took it from OPEB, then we took it up, we took it out of the general fund. Your, your mill rate would stay the same.
It's only 277, not 377.
Right, no, 'cause we, oh.
All right, it's 277, all right, so.
So you, you wanna fund the full amount out of OPEB? The full remainder.
The 223.
The 223.
The 500,000 that's in contingency now, I believe included 100,000 of OPEB, so there's still 100,000 left out there. So I agree with Dan's number.
Okay, so we're at 277 now. You got 133 out there. Or is that the number? Why are we picking 400,000? Is that the number?
What, what does 300,000 back to the school get us?
Not as much as 400,000.
We don't know what it gets anything. We don't have.
I know, I know.
Right, no, from a, from a mill rate standpoint, so I'm coming at it from the other way. Is that, is that, is that the school, unfortunately, we're left in a position where the amount that we're giving to the school is a plug. That's all it is, is we're plugging to, to get to, to a result. And my results personally is, is, is that plug gets us to 2% or less, full stop. And all, I mean, that, that's all it is, is a plug. We have no idea what, what it does, what it means, what it represents. All it is, is a plug to get to a mill rate, and when we present to the town on Tuesday, they don't care about expenses, they don't care about anything. They care about what's the mill rate. That's all they care about.
I, I, I agree with you, Dan, you know.
Yeah.
This is your strength, numbers as well. I mean.
Ricky's too, yeah, everybody's, we're all good at this, but that's so. When we're talking 300, we're talking 400, it all.
It's, it's, I agree. It's been my problem from the last few weeks. I'll be honest with you. It's been my struggle for the last few weeks. Again, the whole process has been my struggle, and I'll say it again. Ricky asked Marcia, what can we do? Marcia says, oh, we can look at this, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this. You know, we'll get behind it, we'll make it work. We go to the other side, it's like, we're not doing anything.
So to get it to exactly two, we would only need to, we could only increase expenses by exactly 170,000. So out of the, if we were doing 177 out of, um, the non-lapsing general fund, we still need 50,000-ish to get it to two or below.
I, 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 I think I'm with Dan. I, I think I'm back to with Dan. You take the 100,000, you take the 177, you move it forward, that's it. That's it, unless we get compelling information. We could.
Then we'll see what their savings are, and then, then we can play with that.
Contingency of, of a considerable amount of money.
Yep.
Again, the contingency, and we keep going back to the contingency, we don't know how big that's gonna grow. And again, Steve has been very clear, and he's right about this, is we don't know what costs are coming our way. So if the money's on the town side, it gives Steve and everybody a lot of flexibility on to solve the whole town's problems. It doesn't, it isn't pulled into one corner. It, it gives Steve and other boards the flexibility to meet whatever we need to meet along the way, whether it be in education, whether it be a town side, whether it be another crisis that pops up that Steve's gotta deal with, 'cause he's dealt with the, a bunch of crises and he's dealt well with them. But I mean, we're getting hung up on this big number on the contingency side, but it's flexibility to cover spending that we don't even know what's in the pipeline. We, we said we'd cover the cleaning of the schools of COVID. We said we would cover the, the special ed overruns, or, I mean, you know, extra students. It's not fair to call them overruns, because this Board of Ed can't control that. I mean, that is what it is. So I mean, we gotta be careful about that with the unknowns. And Steve, go ahead, speak up, please, because.
Uh, Glenn, I agree with you. You know, if we're, we're trying to make decisions as to where best to put money, it's best to put it in the contingency, 'cause we can use it wherever we need it. If we dedicate it one place, it's there, it's.
It's cornhole.
Yeah. I agree with Glenn.
And it's part of what you presented to us. You used the word flexibility and Marcia's process of, we are facing a crisis, we don't know what's ahead of us. It could be over and we're gonna come out of this with roses, and it could be worse than what we think, but the key word is flexibility and adaptability. Am I missing something?
No, you're not.
No.
So again, I, I agree with Dan on the plug. I mean, we don't have enough answers. I'm not sure we're gonna get the answers. That's the scary part. I'm on the other side of this is we might not get the contingency numbers, because the school's gonna still have to pay their bills to June 30th. We have to make a decision by June 4. So we don't know what that number coming back. Isn't in fairness to them, they don't know that number, really. I mean, I, 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 I can't even hang them out there. They don't know that number. Uh, I go back to, and Ricky, I applaud your 400,000 dollars. I respect it, but I think we're, we're pushing numbers. I almost think you gotta take, you know, if we're gonna pick a number, it's the 100 OPEB 177 from the, the non-lapsing fund, and that's it. That's where we sit right now. That's the adjustment we make.
Brian, I agree with you. Brian, I agree with you.
I'm a no on anything over one and three-quarter increase.
We're not increasing anything.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying.
We, we're not increasing, we're giving back two seventy-seven, that we, we utilize the one seventy-seven non-lapsing, we take the one hundred K OPEB. You're at two, you're at two seventy-seven, there's no, and Ricky, realistically, from the number, from a picking number, there's no difference between four hundred thousand and, and two seventy-seven. If, if we're gonna have some kind of an outlook of, if we get better numbers, we're gonna feed back in. I mean, i- if we get a, a huge number, we can feed back in, like, you know, the, rid of, whatever that process is.
Glenn? One thing, one thing we haven't talked about yet, and it's on our agenda, is I think there's a realistic avenue to, to get some additional funding for the board of ed, and it's on our, it's on our agenda. At some point, we should talk about that. I think the realistic way, they can get a half million dollars.
I'm sorry, I, you, my computer went silent for a minute, what did you say?
Always when I'm talking.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about, there's an item on our agenda of, of way to generate additional funds for the board of ed. We haven't even discussed it, and it's on our agenda to talk about tonight, and I think it's a realistic way that the board could get an additional half a million dollars. I really think they could, and should.
Alright, so what Mark is talking about is, and other people have brought this up, and it was a topic of discussion tonight, and before we get a hundred letters, five hundred letters, a thousand letters, it was basically talked about because of the idea, we can't vote, we don't have our public voting. So other people I've talked to and other towns have talked about, they haven't really talked about it in full detail, is set up an outside fund that as these, we're getting letters that are fifty percent, we're, we're, we're able to pay the extra taxes, we wanna pay the two hundred and fifty extra dollars. Can we use a vehicle of these parents and taxpayers that wanna vote yes for a tax increase? Can they take the two hundred and fifty dollars, put it into this outside fund as their vote, basically? And the people who are zero percent, would it be on that press, because they can't vote, because we're in the unique position this year, people do not have a say? Do we have the opportunity to say all of the letters that we've gotten, that two hundred and fifty dollars isn't gonna sink a household, two hundred and fifty dollars isn't gonna save anybody's house? Two hundred and fifty dollars is nothing, that these people can put two hundred and fifty dollars into the, this account that's directly under the board of ed control? Because if they were gonna vote yes for the budget, they were already voting for a two hundred and fifty dollar increase, they were comfortable with that. They were, when they put the vote in for yes, the comfort zone was, I know it's gonna cost me more money, I'm okay with that. The people that were voting no, didn't want to increase their taxes, so is this something that we could talk about? That we could set up an outside fund, as long as it's okay with legal counsel? That, if, if you had a thousand households that agreed that two hundred and fifty dollars was not a lot, for taxes, whether they have children or not, they could put two hundred and fifty dollars into that account, that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's a horrible precedent to set.
It's terrible, Eileen, everything's terrible, cutting the board of ed budget's terrible, everything about this year is terrible.
Also, it's well beyond the purview of the board of finance to do that.
Exactly. There's nothing, they, they could do that anyway. Regardless of what number we come up with, that can be done by the board of ed, or by whoever, it has nothing to do with what we're doing.
I agree with you.
And, and it, and it, I, I, you, you and I talked about this earlier, to, to, to full disclosure, and I thought about it, and I hate it more.
I'm fine with that, I'm fine if everybody hates it, I'm just trying to look at, I don't have any more answers, I'm at a point, I am so far out of answers
Yep.
Of, we're getting half the people at zero, we're getting half the people at, at three point five. Every answer has been, I can't afford it, or we can't afford it, I mean, that's the, the problem of where we're at, everybody's saying, we're getting half the people saying we can't afford any increases, we're getting half the people that say twenty dollars a month is nothing.
It's, it's the responsibility of the, it's, it's the responsibility of the town to fund, to fund all services, and unfortunately, it's the responsibility of the six of us to determine what that amount is, full stop.
Alright. I agree with Dan.
Case closed.
That's, I mean, no, that's my, that, and full stop for me, not full stop for the discussion, that's not fair.
It's opinion, it's case closed, it was a, again, it, it is we're in unprecedented times, we're making, six of us are making a decision for six thousand. We, again, we have half the people that are saying two hundred and fifty dollars is not a lot of money, we got half the people saying, I can't afford it.
Yeah, but Glenn, we have fifty to sixty people saying zero, fifty to sixty people saying, oh, you gotta keep the budgets where they are and support the schools.
Yes.
Um, those are both sides of the fence, the middle is not being representative.
I agree.
The middle will be represented by what we're trying to vote on tonight.
Right.
Right.
So I think
I'm, I'm in full agreement with you, we're, we're in full agreement, don't take it wrong, I'm just trying to think of what other ways, what other options do we have? What do we have?
Well, if somebody sets up an account, I'll donate, I was in favor of a three and a half, I'm more than happy to figure out the difference between one seven-five and three and a half, and put it into a fund for this school and the town.
That's about six grand for you, right?
More like seven.
It would be less than
Alright, so let's circle back, it's off the table, not even the discussion, it was just a thought process, I mean
You can always still donate, and we could put it right to the board of ed revenue, you know, have they have the offsetting revenues, so we could put your money there, Mark.
You just put a note on the check?
And, and a low cover letter, we'll get it there.
Cool, we'll get it there, but I, I agree, it's a, I think, I agree with Dan one hundred percent here.
Alright, sold. I'm okay, but forget, again, it's just a point of, we've looking at every stone right now, and I don't know what other stones, we're circling around the hundred stones and we're nowhere.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we do, that, that we, that we set a budget
I, I still have a motion pending.
Oh, sorry, but
To be fair.
Sorry about that, right?
And I'm gonna ma, and I'm gonna modify my motion, so, sorry, I've been, I've been, yeah, well, I've been thinking a lot, so here's what I wanna do now. One seventy-seven to the schools coming from the non-lapsing general fund. Then it was a hundred thousand funding OPEB. And then additional one twenty-three going into the schools that increases the mill rate to one point nine three percent, we're under two percent, they get four hundred thousand. Do I get a second?
One second. Where's the one twenty-three coming from?
Taxes, that, that's a tax increase, that brings the mill rate up to one point nine three.
I'm a no on that. I think, if we had to get more into the schools, another hundred and twenty-three, I'd find a more creative way to do it.
I would take it out of contingency, but no one wants to give that up, so that's, that's my proposal, no, that's general fund, they're two different, totally separate things.
Okay.
Marcia, is there a way to show that on the screen, even, even back of the envelope?
Um, yeah.
I like the number three, Ricky, while she does that, so my thinking of, to get there would be to give them the first one twenty-three out of their savings. In addition to the ninety-one, we've already promised them out of their savings.
Well, my, in this scenario, whatever they have in savings can go directly to the contingency account.
I know, I'm trying to keep the mill rate down to something where
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and we, and we can, if you want, if, you know, we could have the discussion to pay that down, that one twenty-three, when they actually have a solid savings number, I'm okay with that too.
I just don't know when they're gonna have a solid savings number. It doesn't, because that is a moving target for them.
So Ricky, while we, while we watch the, the magic on the screen here, which is fun. You're, so, so with the, with the one twenty-three and, and, and getting to the four hundred, their, their surplus, what happens to any surplus they have, and are you, is that it, are you, that, that's the, that's the end of, of what we're
The surplus, the surplus would go all into contingency, or if you wanted to use it to pay down mill part of it, I'm, I'm okay with that too.
And if the surplus comes out to, if they buy it down now, then what happens to the one twenty-three? If they, if the four ninety, if they say we're gonna use, you know, two hundred of it for, for this year?
I, 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 I'm trying to add back in four hundred thousand, I'm not, I, I, again, we don't, we don't know what they're trying to back back, other than, you know, it's ninety-one thousand right now?
Yep.
So
What if they bought back all four hundred thousand, and we put in this four hundred thousand?
Um, I'm, I would be very open to bringing the number down, if they, if that was
We don't have a choice, we won't have that number. So you, you gotta hold the line, Ricky, you gotta hold the line, if, if they spend that four hundred thousand dollars, Ricky, and you put the four hundred thousand in, you gotta
Alright, but I'm still, but that's what, well, okay, but you guys are adding to, to, to my scenario, I'm, I'm proposing right now, it, it would increase the mill to one point nine three. Whatever comes after the fact, we could use it to throw into contingency, we could use it to buy back down the mill.
But what if there is none?
It's a possibility, I think it'd be unlikely, I mean, if they, if they came that far off to their estimate, or just somehow found half a million dollars worth of things to buy in this budget, to buy down next year's budget, um, I think it would be in very poor taste for them to do that behind our back.
Alright. So on, on this screen, um, before, we had a half million dollars here, that, um, which I had allocated, let me just undo this here for a minute. Um, I had allocated be, our half million dollars of savings as a hundred and seventy-seven, which was their non-lapsing, and three twenty-two, uh, everything else, so and that was just to show, uh, so that half million dollars is from fund balance, because we have non-lapsing in there, and so I just wanted to show that being used. So what this would mean is if we were to add the one seventy-seven up here, again, to the surplus, we'd be using six hundred thousand, the um, of surplus in their one seventy-seven, so this is what's coming out of our fund balance, is that, that I don't know how to, to word this, if, if someone, just let me know if this is making sense, that that ha, that we don't, didn't have the one seventy-seven allocated separately, because that's just not the way we've done the policy in the past, it's already in our fund balance. So now we're taking once, we're taking seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars out of fund balance. And we are also adding over here, four hundred thousand. So their cut is no, I've done so that, I put it in down here, that's, that's the wrong line, sorry. Um, so it's a it's a three and a quarter percent increase, that's, we're adding four hundred thousand back here. And, um, that would be one point nine four percent revenue.
One point nine four percent mill rate.
Mill rate, mill rate increase, yep. With the caveat, that's all back of the envelope, that
I got it, I got one point nine three, so I trust your one point nine four.
Alright, I'm gonna go way out of the box again, and I'm okay with that, because I'm at loopy stage anyway. We downturned revenue seven hundred thousand dollars because of the worst case scenario, what if you upturned it to six hundred thousand?
Uh, actually, can I talk about that? Uh, Marcia, on that sheet, I already found forty-five thousand dollars of duplications, so uh, the seven hundred and two thousand really should be, should be forty-five thousand less.
I mean, do we hedge back on the, the loss of the revenue?
I, Marcia, am I right on that?
Um, so I think what you're talking about is, um, the, that there's a sheet, when we talked last week about the revenue from the tax collector, that she was going to be sending out, uh, lean notices, or, or lean sale notifications. And she gave us her worksheet that she was working on, that showed seven twenty, and that seven twenty, um, Mark pointed out, and, and, and the tax collector's defense, she just sent that, that was a work in progress that she stopped. Um, so there was, instead of seven twenty that she was gonna send out, was more like, uh, six eighty-five or something.
Six seventy-five, I think.
Um, six seventy-five.
It was three thousand five thousand roughly.
Um, but that was just the number that we were, that's still receivable, the receivable hasn't changed, that was just the number we were talking about, that, uh, we would hope would shake the trees, and, and why we thought we were under, uh, um, an explanation for why we thought we were under right now, those are the people that she couldn't send tax sales to.
No, no, I understand, but my point is, we're not at seven hundred thousand there, it's actually a little less than that, so that
Yes.
So we should lower that on this projection now anyways.
Well, yeah, let, let's circle back to Ricky's four hundred thousand, if, instead of the one twenty-three on the tax increase, we have lowered our expectations from the state's, um, grant money as well, I mean, gratefully so, we hedged that. We hedged the, the taxable, uh, money as well. Wha- what if we took the risk on the, the less loss of revenue of one twenty-three, which isn't a big loss? We have the contingency at a number where if we really lost it, we still have a little flexibility hoping. We take the one seventy-seven, which was their non-lapsing anyway, and the OPEB. We've now really haven't affected any mill rate change, we've gotten to the Ricky's goal of four hundred thousand. And we can close it up, move forward, I mean, Steve, where's your head at?
I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, you know, we're, as you said, we're all guessing where we're gonna be. Changing the decrease in revenue by a hundred thousand or so, that's a perfectly reasonable thing to do, I think.
I mean, and you know you have our support, right? I mean, if we missed this number.
Yeah, and as we said, we're gonna be giving you monthly updates on this, so we'll know where we are.
Dan, you're a numbers guy, throw it out at me, where did I steer wrong here?
I'm okay with that, it's, that's the, the alternative is taking it from the general fund now, if we're wrong, we, we take it from the general fund a year from now.
Yeah, good idea.
Eileen?
Yep.
Mark?
Hundred percent.
Brianna?
So it's four hundred back to the schools, and the mill rate doesn't change on that one point seven six, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now, but I, I mean, that's where I'm at, though, I mean, we have that understanding, right? I mean, for me, that's where I'm at.
And that's a, that's getting the contingency money back to the town, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, yes, Dan's shaking his head, so I get it, I'm in agreement, and it's a, I'm watching every and it did, it's a hard stop at that point, it's, that's it. Okay.
It's a hard stop unless it's a real game changer.
Got it, yeah.
Ricky, your proposal.
I'm good with that.
Love it.
Eileen, you're good with this too?
I am. I don't think I'm gonna get any better.
Are you gonna say hard stop?
I don't think you are either, if you wanna know the truth, Eileen.
I know, I, I can tell.
Okay. So
Guess I should have thrown out two hundred thousand first, instead of four hundred thousand, huh?
That's not money Come back to the table, we're not, no, no, the vote is on the table.
No, I, I think four hundred is appropriate, I do, I, I stand by what I said.
And we're agreeing to the vehicles.
I agree.
Can you re, can you restate them again?
Well, I think Ricky, if he gets it, should state them, because it's his motion still.
Good point.
So we're adding four hundred thousand back to the schools, one seventy-seven coming from the non-lapsing general fund portion of the revenues. Another hundred thousand coming from OPEB, and, uh, where, as I understand it, a one twenty-three K increase to the revenues. And if we don't meet that, then it will have to get paid by the general fund next year. And if we don't meet that, then it will have to get paid by the general fund next year, correct?
Right. Correct.
Cool. So we're taking a gamble-ish on the one twenty-three, assuming we're probably gonna come in a little higher on the revenues than originally projected.
Right, and in fairness to Steve, and, and again, he said this is worst case in his eyes, I mean, he.
Right.
Managing the worst case, which is admirable, right? I mean, we're on the right page, Steve, but I mean, and we'll support you if we miss.
Yeah, I, I told you, if I, if I wasn't comfortable with doing this, I would tell you right now. Uh, most towns are not changing their revenue figures, and I think that's a mistake.
I agree. I, I, I think, though, we did talk, though, we were at the most, worst case, let's try to, instead of raising the taxes, let's try to hedge the revenue, that's all. So we're all in agreement.
Yeah.
We have, we have a second.
I'll second Ricky's motion if it needs it.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those in not favor? Alright, we pass unanimously.
Good job.
So Marcia and Steve, if you can help me with the presentation, it would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, uh, we'll start to put this together, send us the presentation you want to use, and we'll populate the numbers, and give you whatever you need.
Last year for the public hearing, I'll send it to you.
Okay, just want to make sure we could do what you want.
Alright, so that being said, we're at the public comment section. All those that want to speak, please do.
I'm muting.
Anybody public comment?
Saluga.
Rich, go ahead.
Uh, Rich Saluga, thirty-two grade here in Lane. Um, I would just like to thank everybody's efforts. A little disappointing in some of the comments, uh, I'd like to just make a couple of comments on that. First of all, I think we are in a dire situation. Um, Steve, I just had a question, if the docs testing is open to other essential workers, like grocery, grocery workers, postal employees, UPS, or is it just for town employees?
Uh, we've made it for just town employees, fire, EMS, police, and essential workers for the town.
Okay.
Alright, uh, that's gonna open up pretty quickly, though, I think, Rich. We're getting there.
The last thing I would say is, uh, um, two things about the Board of Ed. Um, it's been maddening to listen to some of the conversation tonight, because I've watched you guys in meetings, and you've been continually frustrated by uh, what appears to be a lack of management of the BOE funds. And yet, you're constantly trying to find out, given them more money. I, I don't quite understand that rationale, but um, the other thing is I think it's a fallacy to say that the Board of Ed is not making any new investments, when I think Steve and Glenn are talking about they're hiring eight or nine new people. Um, that's a new investment. Whether they're using reallocated funds within their current budget to use to pay for that, that doesn't mean that it's not a new investment. Um, new investment doesn't mean you have to increase your budget to say you have a new investment. And I think this continual comment, commentary about the fact that that they don't have really much new investment, I've heard it from them as well. Oh, we only have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new investments. How do you have that when you're hiring eight or nine new people? Uh, it just doesn't fit. And I, and I think that's just, you know, it's, it's a way of, uh, with all due respect, it's a way of snookering people. Um, and I think that's wrong. And, um, it's just disappointing. Um, but it is what it is. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Well, I know you don't want to hear this, Glenn, but this is Harry Shaker, eighty-seven, Long Meadow Hill Road. I can't believe I sat through this meeting. I'll tell you, I don't know how you guys do this. Uh, my head is spinning, and I have nothing to do with it, as far as the numbers. Um, thank you very much to all of you, Marcia, Steve, as well as the Board of Finance. Um, just real, very briefly, um, you know, you talked about, um, didn't really consider, but talked about bonding, you know, small items, bonding road, you talked about, you know, bringing things up to two percent. Um, the Board of Selectmen, uh, from my first day, one of the main thrusts was not, not to spend money, not to bond money on small items, and not to bond it on pagan. And to think that you even had to discuss this, I know it wasn't, you know, it, it, we're not going in that direction, but to, to think that you had to discuss it. And with one of the boards not being willing to even come to the table um, as a resident, it's very discouraging. Not as a selectman, as a resident, to think that you have one board who refuses to come, which forces you into these kinds of decisions. And my other statement is, what does this do to next year's budget process? Okay, if you can sit there and lay on the floor and bang your feet and hands on, and say, I'm not coming in to talk with you, and then you're bending over backwards to get them money, you know, what's that do for next year? Uh, I'm just really disappointed. I, I, I'm not mad personally at anybody, I'm just disappointed with the way this was handled. Um, and so I, I, I know what their position they're in, I was there for fourteen years, but I'm very disappointed. And I'm very proud of you, and regardless of, uh, how, what things happen, I will always support you on this effort. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry.
Appreciate it. Any other public comment?
Yes, please.
Betsy, state your name.
Betsy McElvein, one two seven Long Meadow Hill Road. Um, I I think that, that I agree a little with Harry. I, it, it always disturbed me when the town side of the budget, one-third of the budget gets routinely cut, nobody gets to say, wait, wait, what happened to my piece of the budget? Um, why, why are the town services, um, all of them given such treatment, I guess? I know schools are important, they always have been, they always will be, but so is the rest of what the town does, and I think I see, yes, you all excoriated the Board of Ed, and then decided they still needed more money. Um, nobody ever said the town side needed more money. I, yeah, thank you, Mark, you did, but, um,
What about me? Wait.
It's, it's disappointing to me on a, on a personal level, and I, and I think we need to, um, and I would like to see it addressed in some other way. Thank you, thank you, but I, I know this was a tough meeting against, jeez, I'm exhausted. I didn't have to say anything or think. Um, it, but you, you do put a tremendous amount of effort into these meetings, and I will support your budget, because we have to have a budget, and we have to move forward. So, good luck, and I will come to your town, to your public hearing, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy, appreciate it, thank you. Any other public comment? Before we go to adjourn, anyone want to make a comment? Uh, I know it's sort of out of realm here, but this has been an out-of realm budget process. Steve, do you want to make a closing comment or anything?
You're still muted.
Yes, I, just give me a second, I gotta hit the button.
Um, I, I, I want to say, you know, I've watched a few other towns, uh, Board of Finance meetings, just to get a feel for what they were doing. Um, you know, scroll through. No town that I've looked at, no town I've talked to has gone to the level of detail and actually looked at line by line, what are we gonna do for the next year? Where are we? Where are we gonna end up? What if this happens? What if that happens? You guys have done, I know, as Betsy said, and I think a couple of other people said, Harry said it, my, my head is spinning. Oh, we're trying to keep track of all these numbers, but you guys are doing, and have done an incredibly good job, and I just want to thank you for, for taking that time to work for the town in the best interests of the residents of the town. Because, you know, a year and a half, two years, three years from now, people are gonna look back and say, well, how did Brookfield do so well through this whole thing? And it's because of you guys. That's why. Thanks.
And you and Marcia.
Yeah, well, we.
Absolutely.
We do help.
And, and Steve, then I'll close out on the backside of this. We're here to support you. Uh, I think that the working relationship has been very good, and some of these risks that we took, again, we're gonna reiterate as a board, we're gonna stand behind you, and then and, and, and help you lead the town, so.
Thank you. They, I know you will, we're working really well together, you know, it's just great.
Appreciate it. Anybody else want to close before Mark makes his favorite words?
He agrees with the first selectman.
Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, go get some rest, everybody, thank you.
My favorite.
Have a good night.
Alright, good job.